We got all nine?
No, we only have eight.
Who's missing?
You only have eight.
Oh, this, oh, we, we only have eight? We didn't get anybody put on?
It'll wait until August.
Thank you.
Okay.
Rod knows that, I just.
I didn't get the memo.
Okay. Cody, did you open us up to the public?
Yes, it's open.
Alright, so we're live right now?
Yes.
Alright. Rod, it's all yours.
Okay, thank you. Like that, welcome everybody to the Wednesday, June twenty-third, twenty-twenty-one Planning Commission Meeting. It is now six-thirty-one. I'd like to, uh, determination of quorum, Mr. Raze?
Aye.
Mr. Kenny?
Here.
Mr. Burke?
Yeah.
Mr. Anderson?
Here.
Mr. Mattson?
Present.
Secretary Lukowitz?
Here.
Vice Chairman Clooney?
Here.
Chairman Flynn is also here. We have eight, we still have a quorum. Okay, will everybody stand for Pledge of Allegiance, please? Pledge of Allegiance? Thank you very much. Okay, first on the agenda, we have approval of minutes for May twenty-sixth, twenty-twenty-one. Uh, could I have a motion for approval of minutes?
Motion to approve the minutes.
I have a motion by Mr. Mattson, do I have a second?
Aye, second.
Second by Ms. Lukowitz, any discussion? Hearing none, Mr. Raze?
Aye.
Mr. Kenny?
Aye.
Burke?
Aye.
Mr. Anderson?
Aye.
Mr. Mattson?
Aye.
Ms. Lukowitz?
Aye.
Mr. Clooney?
Aye.
And Chairman Flynn also says aye. Minutes are approved. We have two ratifications tonight. Uh, we, the first one is, uh, Tallwood Estates. I get a motion to ratify?
Motion to ratify Tallwood Estates.
I have a motion by Mr. Mattson, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Clooney. Um, well, I'll do a roll call, Mr. Raze?
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Burke?
Aye.
Mr. Anderson?
Aye.
Mr. Mattson?
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Clooney?
Aye.
Chairman Flynn also says aye. Tallwood Estates is ratified. Uh, second is Sunset Tent and Sun relocation. I get a motion on that ratification?
Motion to ratify.
Who's that, please?
I think Carl squeaked in before I did.
I think it was James, but.
I'll take you, Mr. Burke, I lost one. Do I have a second?
A second.
I have a second by Mr. Raze. Uh, do a roll call, Mr. Raze?
Aye.
Mr. Kenny?
Aye.
Mr. Burke?
Aye.
Mr. Anderson?
Aye.
Mr. Mattson?
Aye.
Ms. Lukowitz?
Aye.
Mr. Clooney?
Aye.
Chairman Flynn also says aye. So Sunset Tent and Sim location is ratified. Okay. Next, we have, uh, a recommendation to the zoning board. It's for special use permit for a shed. Owner applicant, Christopher Cole. Applicant is seeking a special use permit, dimensional variance from the zoning board of review for place. Uh, twelve by twenty-three by ten shed in the front yard, two feet from the property line. AP three eighteen lot thirty-six, zone RR two. It's sixty-eight acres of Pine Road. Anybody here representing the applicant?
Yes, I am. Christopher Cole.
Hi, Mr. Cole. Can you just, uh, give a quick, uh, overview of what you want to do for the board, please?
Yes, just wanted, um, re- repair the existing shed that was there, that was, uh, unsafe. So basically, it's just kind of repairing as much as we can and wound up, uh, just redoing it. It was just, just un- way too unsafe, that was, uh, the existing shed that was there.
Okay. Everybody on the board see that?
Yes.
Yep.
Anybody, uh, have any questions for Mr. Cole?
Is that the same shed?
No. It's, that's the new structure that was starting to be built. Um, because when I, when I was redoing it, I had asked a couple of my neighbors, just figuring, trying to see, you know, if it needed to be one, because it was already one, one shed there. And they were, they said, no, it should be fine, you should be fine. And, well, apparently it's not fine, so now we're, now we're at this point.
Alright, so you're here because the building inspected?
Yes.
Thank you for it. Okay, thank you.
Welcome.
Yeah, when you were repairing the old one, it wa- it wasn't a problem, since you had to build new, then you need a permit and all that stuff. Needs to come before us.
Okay.
Understandable. Anybody else?
Mr. Chair Glenn Anderson, this is just going in this, this is our same footprint, it's going in the same spot, you're not moving it any closer to the road, right? It's pretty much where it was?
Nope, same, same spot, same location. It was probably, it's actually six inches away from the old shed that was there, from property line.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, hearing none, I'll take a motion.
Mr. Flynn, Jim Kenny?
Go ahead, Jim.
I'll make a favorable recommendation to the zoning board. Uh, address sixty-eight acres of Pine Road, Atkins Christopher Cole. AP three eighteen lot thirty-six, zone RR two, rural residential, single-family residential. Uh, Atkins before seeking a special use permit to construct a twelve by twenty-three by ten shed in the front yard. The Atkins will also appear before zoning for dimensional variance from the side yard setback. Uh, the Atkins actually just replacing an old shed was that, that was there. And is actually six inches further away from the property line now. Uh, ingress and egress to the lot is provided via an existing driveway with permanent physical access to acres of Pine Road. The proposed shed will not impede automotive, pedestrian sa- safety, traffic flow, or access to the property. There is sufficient off-street parking. Our utilities are pre-existing. The abutting properties and surrounding neighborhood is primarily single-family residential. Other lots in the area contain non-conforming structures. The proposal is compatible with the abutting properties. Proposal is consistent with the Coventry Com- Comprehensive Plan. The granting of the special use permit and dimensional variances will not affect the health, safety, and welfare of the neighborhood. I would also like to include the planning commission's, uh, excuse me, the planning staff. Yeah, try this again, the plan director's report in my recommendation. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kenny. I have a motion, do I have a second?
A second.
Second by Ms. Lukowitz, any discussion? Hearing none. Take a, uh, roll, Mr. Raze?
Aye.
Kenny?
Aye.
Mr. Burke?
Aye.
Mr. Anderson?
Aye.
Mr. Mattson?
Aye.
Ms. Lukowitz?
Aye.
Mr. Clooney?
Aye.
Chairman Flynn also says aye. The recommendation to zoning, uh, is approved.
Thank you guys very much.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good, have a good night.
Okay, next on the, is that the agenda, we have another recommendation to zoning. Recommendation to zoning board of review for special use permit. It's an addition, owner applicant, Mickey Kuto, applicant who is seeking a special use permit and a dimensional variance from the zoning board of review to construct a forty by twenty-two addition. Twenty-two point one feet from the property line where fifty feet is required. It's AP three eleven lot sixty-six point two, zone RR five twenty-one Hockney Hill Road. Anybody here representing the applicant?
Yes, myself, Mickey Kuto.
Hi, how are you tonight?
Good, how are you?
Good. You just want to give a quick, uh, explanation to the board?
Um, basically, I would like to put a study onto my house.
Anybody have any questions for the applicant? Hi, Mr. Flynn, hold on. Okay. Just trying to read the plan. So where, how many bedrooms are in the house right now?
Uh, three.
All upstairs?
Correct.
Okay. And that's going to be a study, right? Not a bedroom? I don't see any closet, so I'm going to assume it's a study, even though there's a walk-in bathroom right next to it. Does that bath have a shower in it, too?
Yes, it does.
Okay. Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Got to entertain a motion for recommendation to zoning.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion if you have it.
Sure will, Mr. Burke, go ahead.
Uh, this is a recommendation to the zoning board of review. The owner and applicant is Mickey Kuto. The address is twenty-one hundred Hockney Hill Road, AP three-one-one lot six-six point two. Zone RR five, it's a single-family residential. The applicant is seeking a special use permit to construct a forty-foot by twenty-two-foot addition to their home. The applicant will also appear before the zoning board for a dimensional variance from the side yard setback. Ingress and egress to the lot is provided via an existing drive with permanent physical access to Hockney Hill Road. The proposed addition will not impede automotive or pedestrian safety, traffic flow, or access to the property. Sufficient off-street parking is available on the property, and the proposed addition will not decrease the number of parking spaces. Utilities are all pre-existing. The abutting properties and surrounding neighborhood is primarily single-family residential. The proposal is compatible with the abutting properties. The proposal is consistent with the Coventry Comprehensive Plan. The granting of special use permit and dimensional variances will not affect the health, safety, and welfare of the neighborhood. Uh, therefore, I would like to make a favorable recommendation to the zoning board of review. And I would like to include the planning director's report in my motion.
Thank you. I have a motion by Mr. Burke, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Mattson?
Yep.
Any discussion? Okay, hearing none, Mr. Raze?
Aye.
Aye.
Burke?
Aye.
Mr. Anderson?
Aye.
Mr. Mattson?
Aye.
Ms. Lukowitz?
Aye.
Mr. Clooney?
Aye.
Chairman Flynn also says aye. Recommendation to zoning is approved.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Does this mean we don't attend the meeting on the seventh, and we're all set?
Uh, you'll be going to zoning, you have to appear, you have to appear in front of zoning. This is only a favorable recommendation from this board.
Excellent, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, we have another recommendation to zoning.
Mr. Clooney, may I have a minute?
Go ahead.
Yeah, uh, Cody? Could you make me a co-host? I need to bring in some folks, or you can bring them in, one or the other.
You're now the co-host.
Thank you. Now, if I want to bring somebody in, uh, I hit, uh, promote to panelist?
Correct.
Mr. Swazza? You are muted.
Hello, thank you.
There he is. I did send you an invitation, sir.
Okay, sorry about that, I didn't, I didn't get that for some reason, I don't know, uh.
Yeah, okay. We're all set now, thank you.
All set. Okay, next we have six point three recommendation to zoning board of review for special use permit for Bullio House. Owner applicant Andrew J. Bullio. Applicant is seeking a special use permit, dimensional variance from the zoning board of review to move and replace the existing single-family residence and garage. The proposed twenty-four by thirty-six garage will be located in front yard. And the thirty by forty-two house will be forty-eight feet from the rear property line where ninety feet is required. AP thirty-three lot six point thirteen, zone RR two, six Hill Farm Camp Road. Anybody here representing the applicant?
Yeah, this is Sam Sworza from Coventry Survey Company.
Go ahead.
Here representing the applicant. Um, I'm with, um, Coventry Survey Company, we're at forty-six South Main Street in Coventry. Um, I'm here representing, uh, Andrew Bullier, uh, for his project at Six Hill Farm Camp Road. Uh, this is a newly, um, created condo association. Um, from, uh, former existing camps, um, down on, down on Hill Farm Camp. Um, it was developed back in the nineteen forties and fifties. Um, alright, yeah, Russ, you're going to share your screen for me? Alright, so, um, this, this new condo lot, it contains fourteen thousand square feet, as you can see on the, the site plan. Uh, it's part of Assessor's Platte thirty-three lot six point one-three. Um, the total of this parcel is roughly, um, sixty-six acres, uh, that, that portion of that, that condo, um, lot. Uh, it's adjoining, uh, Flat River Reservoir to the east. Uh, the applicant has an existing, it's a five-bedroom camp and a garage. Um, that he's proposing to demolish both of those. And, uh, he wants to build a new three-bedroom dwelling. Uh, and a new three-car garage. The, uh, the dwelling, the new dwelling will be thirty by forty-two. Uh, the garage will be twenty-four by thirty-six. Um, the site serviced by, uh, private well and septic. Uh, and at this time, we've submitted to, um, the ALDS program and the Wetlands program at the state. Um, and we're awaiting review, uh, so. Uh, so we're, we're proposing, um, we're, we're in need of a special use permit um, in a dimensional variance from the zoning board. Uh, the special use permit is for, uh, expansion of non-conforming use uh, of the condo association. Uh, this is similar to the Flat River condo association on Raymond's Point. Uh, the same, same thing has to happen, uh, there, so. Uh, also, we need a special use permit, which is, will be part of the original, the original special use permit to allow the new garage in the front yard. Um, and we're also requesting a dimensional variance because we're, um, too close. We are within the rear setback of ninety feet is requ- required, and we're, uh, forty-eight point three. Um, so we're, um, the applicant's requesting a positive recommendation to, from the planning board, uh, so we can move forward to the, uh, zoning board. So that's pretty much the project, and I'll turn it back over to the board for questions.
But you said it already has an exist- existing septic? Or you're putting a new septic?
Well, yeah, this, this whole area is serviced by septic, and well, we're putting, we're proposing, um, a new, uh, septic system with, with this, um, for the new house, we are.
Okay. Thank you. Anybody else on the board have any questions? Go ahead, Rick. Um, alright, so the existing dwelling is actually closer to the rear setback than the proposed. Is that what I, I, I flipped through and saw it?
Yeah, we, we're moving it, uh, about eighteen feet away from.
Right, okay. I know, I read it quick, and I thought it said eighteen inches, I was trying to flip back, but I figured I'd just ask you. Okay, so the plan, so, so, so that part, and is the old dwelling actually the same size or smaller, or just generally about the same, or?
Yeah, it's, it's pretty much the same size.
Okay, but only three bed. Now, it looks like, um, you got a well, and then I see the old cesspool to be removed. Uh, is that, what do you, what kind of septic system do you have over there on the side? Was it some type of a galley system, or?
Yeah, so that's just the tank, if we do have the, um, septic plan, um, I think if Russell pans down, you can see, it's actually, um, on the pa- it's on the bigger, um, condo lot, so it's in kind of like an open space.
Okay, so it's across the street on the condo, okay, alright, alright, that's all. So it's got a new septic system, okay, alright.
Yeah.
Because I saw seventy-seven feet to the, to the tank over there, and I wasn't sure if that, is that another, are you pretty confident you're going to get all your DM approvals?
Yeah, because we're, um, we, we're pushing the system way out because of all the wells, so, uh, we had to meet all those well setbacks.
Okay, so you're confident it's going to get approved, you won't have to come back, or everything, you, you expect everything to hold, and that's why you're going forward, just trying to get zoning now?
Yeah, we're reducing bedrooms, and so I think, I think it should go, go through good, so.
Okay. That's all, thank you.
Yeah, I have something, Rod.
Mr. Kenny?
Hi, it's, uh, Jim Kenny. Uh, your drawing says proposed three-bedroom dwelling. What are you designing your septic to? Are you designing it for a three-bedroom?
Yes.
Okay, the issue with that is, is your plan say have a bedroom one, a two, and a master bedroom. And then you have an optional future bedroom at the other end of the house, which would be four bedrooms, which would be too much for the septic system.
Yeah, I think that they would just keep that, that wouldn't be a bedroom, it would be an office. They wouldn't, they're not looking to do any more than a um, three-bedroom.
Alright, well, I'm just giving you a heads up, um, if you take this before the building inspector, you have a closet in there, so it's going to be considered a bedroom. So you're going to have a four-bedroom house with only a septic system to support a three-bedroom house.
Okay, yeah, I think the applicant will be willing to, um, update that before, um, you know, before the building per- process, that's, I think he'll be, he would be fine with that.
I, I'm just giving you a heads up because I speak from personal experience.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. That's all I have, Mr. Flynn.
Mr. Flynn, I have a question.
Go ahead, Mr. Crossman.
Sam, um, I notice you are within fifty feet of the wetlands edge. Are you going before DM for some sort of in- in sig or preliminary determination? What are you doing?
Yeah, we submitted a PD, but it's just, it's still under review.
Okay, so you did submit a PD, okay. Alright, no, I just wanted to make sure. I'm all set, Mr. Flynn, thank you.
Mr. Crossman for catching that. Anybody else on the board?
Mr. Chair Glenn Anderson, I'm just curious, is this, I, I maybe I missed it, is this a, a, a foundation or a slab, a full basement?
Yeah, we're proposing, um, I'm proposing a slab on the plan, but, um, we might do, like, uh, crawl space, um, but we have to keep it really shallow because of the water table, so.
Right, I noticed, that's why I was curious.
Yeah, they're thinking like a, just a shallow slab, just so that they don't have to put, uh, like radiant heat in the floor, because they're planning on, um, you know, probably not using it in the wintertime. So, they'd rather have a crawl space, but, so.
All set, Mr. Anderson?
Yes, sir, thank you, thank you.
Anybody else on the board? Okay, I need to stand a motion.
Mr. Chair Glenn Anderson, uh, if you'll have it, I'll make one. Thank you, uh, yeah, I'd like to make a favorable recommendation, uh, on the issuance of special use permit to proceed to the zoning board. Um, that will require a dimensional variance. Uh, this is for, um, applicant owner Andrew Ballou. Andrew J. Ballou, address six Hill Farm Camp Road. Uh, Platte thirty-three lot, uh, six dot thirteen, uh, zoned RR two residential, single-family. Uh, the proposed use is for a single family, and the applicant is just seeking a special use permit to remove and replace the existing dwelling, the garage, garage will be, and the garage, and relocate in the front yard. The applicant will also appear, uh, has noted, uh, for the zoning board, uh, or review for, uh, setback relief. Uh, there was a couple, uh, you know, a couple of reviews of the, uh, special use permit section eight sixty and, uh, eight sixty-one, and the requirement of, uh, ingress and egress, and, uh, ingress and egress to this lot is provided via an existing drive with permanent physical access to Hill Farm Camp Road. And garage will not impede automotive, pedestrian safety, traffic flow, or, uh, access to the, to the property. The other requirement with off-street parking, uh, sufficient off-street parking is available on the property. Um, and the proposed addition will not decrease, uh, the number of these, uh, parking spaces. Regarding trash, it's not applicable, uh, utilities are, uh, pre-existing already. Uh, as far as the general compatibility with the same lots, uh, with the lots, uh, next door, abutting properties uh, and zoning districts, the, uh, abutting properties and surrounding neighborhood, uh, our primary single-family residential, the proposal is compatible with the abutting properties. Uh, general compatibility with the comprehensive plan, the proposal is consistent with the comprehensive plan. Um, granting, uh, the, uh, that granting will not result in conditions, and go due to public health and safety, the granting of the special use permit and dimensional variances will not affect the health, safety, and welfare of the neighborhood. Uh, I'd just like to add, as testified, just for the drawings, that, that, uh, this is, has, uh, test, testimony, has testified, will, will, is, is going to be a three-bedroom and not a four-bedroom, I just want to put that in to my motion. Uh, as a note, uh, and I'd like to incorporate the planning director's report in this motion.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson, we have a motion by Mr. Anderson, do I have a second?
A second.
I have a second by Ms. Lukowitz, uh, any discussion? Hearing none, Mr. Raze?
Aye.
Mr. Kenny?
Aye.
Mr. Burke?
Aye.
Mr. Anderson?
Aye.
Mr. Mattson?
Aye.
Ms. Lukowitz?
Aye.
Mr. Clooney?
Aye.
Chairman Flynn also says aye, you have a favorable recommendation to zoning.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, next we have number seven, new business for discussion and or action. Seven point one, we have a pre-application, application for Buck's Horn Meadow, owner Padula Builders Incorporated Lot eighty, and Padula's Properties Incorporated Lot ninety-five. Applicant saying proposed seven lot major cluster subdivision with street creation, AP three fifteen lots eighty and ninety-five uh, uh, five, and it's located on Old Flat River Road. Anybody here representing the applicant?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Tom Cronin.
Hi, Mr. Cronin.
Ten seventy Main Street, Coventry, Rhode Island, for the applicant, with me Sam Sworza from Coventry Survey. Um, as Mr. Chairman noted, it's a pre-application for residential cluster development. Um, the lot off of, uh, Flat River Roads, fifty-three point two acres in an R-five zone, currently vacant wooded land. Um, it's an unri- irregular shape, um, and it's bordered, uh, by Susan Bowen Road uh, to the northeast. The, um, the area uh, would support, uh, eight lot subdivision, conventional subdivision, and we've used that as our, uh, yield plan in support of our residential cluster, uh, plan. So there is, uh, a couple of streams running through the property, uh, result in some significant uh, wetlands in the northern parts of the property, particularly to the northeast and the northwest, so to protect those wetland areas and in, in consistent manner with the, uh, residential cluster section of the subdivision regulations, we've, we've, uh, decided to build, uh, some smaller lots and leave the majority. and leave the majority of the land uh undeveloped, open space. Uh, the open space is primarily to the northern part of the lot as shown on the plan that Mr. Crossman's put up. But there is also a little bit of open space uh to the southern part uh near Flat River Road. Um, as you can see in the plan, there's a right-of-way off of Flat River Road between some residential lots. Uh, the cul-de-sac proposed is just under eight hundred linear feet, about seven hundred and ninety linear feet. The seven proposed lots are between one point five and two acres apiece. Each would have a well and a septic system uh individually on the lot. Um, they're proposed to be four-bedroom homes. Uh, the access, vehicular access, pedestrian access and utility access will be off uh Flat River Road. The um, there is a wetland edge in the right-of-way. Um, as, as you can see on the plan. And uh I just wanted to mention that because it's at, it's of some concern. Um, but those of you who've been on the board for a long time, uh, might recall that we had uh proposed a prior subdivision on this site back in between two thousand and five and two thousand and twelve. And at that time, we did obtain an insignificant alteration permit from the Department of Environmental Management um for that road area. And, and we're fairly confident that they'll maintain a, a sig, a consistent position at this time. Um, and that's why the uh, the road is shown uh crossing that wetland edge. Um, there are no variances or anything required um for the lots. The uh, it's a primarily residential area and it's consistent uh with that use. We're at pre-application, so this is a concept plan. Uh, we've included the calculations on the plan and um, to show that uh the land suitable for development uh would support the seven lot concentration in the cluster. And I think that's about it. Uh, it's a, seems like a good use of the property uh in that cluster form. But uh, Mr. Swassa and I are available to answer any questions from the board.
Thank you, Mr. Cronin. Uh, before I ask the board if they have any questions, I just wanna um tell everybody, we're still not doing sidewalks. We're still under COVID uh restrictions by the town. So if anybody wants to go out there on their own, uh, it's available. Uh, saying that, uh, does there anybody from the board have any questions? Not seeing any, Mr. Cronin.
Well, we always like to get some uh commentary, but uh, I, I guess, we'll accept silence in this case.
All, Mr. Cronin.
All right.
That good, Tom.
Oh, yeah. It must be my charm. All right, well, we thank, we thank the board. Uh, this is a major subdivision, so we'll be back for both master plan and preliminary. So we'll see you then. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Cronin. And next we have uh seven point two, we have a preliminary plan for Town Farm Road subdivision. Owner Glenn T. Skirka, Karen Skirka, David J. Skirka and Brett D. Windrow. Applicant same, proposed two lot minus subdivision, AP three twenty-four lot one hundred point one. Zone RR three, address zero Town Farm Road. Anybody here for the applicant?
Yes, good evening for the record.
Go ahead.
Uh, Eric Prevy, P R, uh, P R I V as in Victor E. I'm a registered professional engineer with Dupree Engineering, offices at two Stafford Court in Cranston, Rhode Island. Uh, here with the applicant as well, Glenn Skirka. Um, is it okay if I share my screen? I'll go through it briefly with you?
Absolutely.
Okay, strong one. Uh, so the property is uh located at assessors plat three twenty-four. It's lot one, uh, one hundred point uh one. Uh, it's located off a Town Farm Road in Coventry. Uh, directly off of Flat River Road here, has approximately, uh, excuse me, it has approximately uh five hundred feet of frontage, give or take. Um, it is zoned RR three, three acre zoning, each lot would require two hundred and twenty-five feet of frontage. Uh, showing you the aerial, it's actually a pretty uh current aerial. You can see that it's half wooded on site. And there is also a uh grass field that's located on the site as well. There is direct access and uh front, uh, direct wetland uh associated with Flat River reservoir. Uh, there is no other wetlands located on the site as well, but this kinda gives you a good feel for it. Um, the proposed driver, which I'll get to in a shortly, is actually directly across from Mile Road here as well. Uh, existing conditions on it here, coming over here, again, you can see the tree line uh right along here with the, the grass field area. Um, we do have, this area of town is serviced by private wells and onsite wastewater treatment systems. Um, we were able to do some soil testing. All soil testing was performed by a class four uh licensed soil evaluator. And uh, we have very good groundwater tables on site, all sandy soils, anywhere from six to, to ten feet. Uh, we were actually before you last, uh, last month of the pre-application. Um, and we, we were back for the prelim, preliminary plan as well. Uh, it's proposed as two lots. And uh, the two lots have uh, uh, both legal frontage. So we have lot number one here on the left, uh, has two hundred and eighty-five feet of frontage. Uh, sorry, two hundred and eighty-seven feet of frontage right here. And then the second lot has the required two hundred and twenty-five feet of frontage. Both lots are over the three acre uh zoning as required by the underlying zoning. We are not requesting any waivers, any variances. Uh, all of the proposed improvements are uh, uh, the, are over two hundred feet from the wetland. So there's uh, we do not actually need any wetland uh requirements as well. Uh, we do have both approved soil testing on site and then also we do have an approved uh OWTS application. Uh, we did not submit that with this, but that is actually, uh, we do have a, a approved OWTS for this lot as well. Uh, it will be served by private well and OWTS. We did provide a drainage statement as well. We do have a dry well for the home, so that takes all the roof runoff and puts it, infiltrates it directly on site into a stone uh, stone dry well right here. And then the driveway itself also has a stone trench directly onto it. So uh pitches directly into the stone trench along the side and just infiltrates directly on site. Um, that was kind of a brief overview. There's nothing proposed on lot number two, but uh, we feel it should be a pretty, pretty straightforward. We're not asking any relief and uh, that no road creation, obviously, that's just a driveway for lot number one. Uh, but be happy to answer any questions. I tried to give you a, a brief overview on this.
Thank you, Ron. I'm just reading briefly on the, on the director's report. Uh, you still have to obtain the central Coventry Fire District approval?
Uh, no, we actually have, uh, we did submit that um since then. I think it might have been straight after the report was written perhaps. But we did submit that. We do have a letter from uh the fire marshal stating that they have no objections to this, to this project. Um, also, the, a- as usual with building permit process, it would be routed through all of, you know, when, when actual building permits are, uh, that would be routed through the uh different departments as well. But we did provide one for the overall subdivision as well.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else on the board have any questions? Yeah, to kind of dovetail what you said, Ron, the, the second item, do you have onsite wastewater treatment system approval for, for one lot or both?
Just one lot, but we do have the approved soil testing for the other lot as well. That's the only requirement, is that there's uh DEM approved testing to make sure that, that you have adequate uh suitable uh soils on site. So both lots do. So we do have approved test holes for both sites.
Right, okay. Anybody else? I got one more. Do we have the approved soil erosion and sediment control plan?
That would, that would be at the building permit process is my understanding.
Um, yeah, it just says you're requesting a waiver for, for minor land development checklist items that are not being provided at this time. And approved soil erosion and sediment control plan.
Yeah, we were trying, we wanted to show uh what was gonna be coming in as a building permit. I think typically sometimes you see on minor subdivisions, nothing is shown. I mean, you can show just two lots and, and, and uh it just shows a subdivision. We wanted to show what was coming.
It's not a problem. We can just stipulate in any, any uh approval. I just wanted to make sure that you did, that the planning director's report was still accurate.
Thank you.
And Eric?
Yeah, yes.
Anybody else have any questions?
Mr. Chair Glenn Anderson, uh, also is that you still need relief on, I would say, no, uh, the, to approve from the fire marshal for the applicable fire district, right? You still need that relief?
We, we do not. It, it, uh, we did provide that to, to the planning staff, uh, that, that should be in the file as well. I think it was just right after, maybe right after the report was written, so it might just be, just needs to be updated.
So no, uh, no, you're not, the waivers are off the table, uh, and really the only, uh, if I'm right, you just, you're just looking for, uh, well, you're gonna need the soil erosion and sediment patrol plan from the town engineer.
Right, at building permit process, yes, correct. And we would, we would respectfully request also that the uh final would be reviewed administratively as well, please.
All set, Glenn?
Yes, all's, yes, thank you very much.
You're welcome. Anybody else on the board? Right, hearing none, I'll entertain a motion.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, Jim Kenny, I'll take a shot at it if you don't mind. I'd like to make a favorable motion. All right, hold on a sec, get my, all right, I'd like to make a favorable motion for a two lot minor subdivision uh, for preliminary. Uh, owner applicant Glenn T. Skirker, Karen Skirker, David J. Skirker and Brett Windrow. Address Town Farm Road, AP three twenty-four lot one hundred point one. Zone RR three, lot size thirteen point two acres. Uh, it's vacant land and they're proposing to uh, two sing, make two single-family homes, divide the lots. Um, they're gonna subdivide the existing thirteen point two acre parcel into two parcels. The first parcel will be nine point three acres in size and a three-point acre lot. They're not requiring any dimensional variances. Uh, under the zoning regulations, the lots will have enough area to be subdivided. Uh, the proposed lots will have access to Town Farm Road, a street that shall be adequate for vehicular traffic. Proposed lots will be physically accessible for emergency service from the street upon which they front. Both lots will conform to current zoning regulation. The two lot minor subdivision is, is generally consistent with the town comprehensive plan. The proposed residential development is in keeping with the adjacent uses. Both lots will have direct frontage to Town Farm Road. Comprehensive plan supports residential development in the RR three zone. Defines the rural residential zones as those areas that shall be characterized by low-density residential development, large estates, agricultural and certain low-intensity non-residential activities and incidental to rural environment. These parcels with their proposed acreage are consistent with the comprehensive plan. The proposed subdivision shall be required to receive permits from RIDEM for an approved OWTS on mo, onsite wastewater treatment system and the town engineer for soil erosion and sediment, sedimentation control permit. Strict adherence to the guidelines set forth in these permits shall, should ensure that there will be no negative impacts to the environment. The development will comply with the town of Coventry zoning ordinance. The amount of traffic generated from these two family houses, house lots should be negligible. Um, also like to note, the applicant shall receive the, as previous mentioned, the onsite wastewater treatment permit from RIDEM prior to the issuance of a building permit. Uh, the applicant shall receive the approved soil erosion and cemented set, sedimentation control plan from the town engineer prior to the issue of a building permit. Um, the applicant has stated that they've already received approval for, from Central Coventry Fire District. Um, uh, for subdividing the property, they'll also need final approval when they, they commence with building. I'd also like to include the planning, planning director's report in my recommendation.
Mr. Flynn, would you also like to add final administrative?
Yes, thank you. I would also like to add um administrative, um, the final plan be administrative in nature.
Thank you, Mr. Kenny. I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Lukowitz. Any discussion? Hearing none. Mr. Ray?
Aye.
Mr. Kenny?
Aye.
Burke?
Aye.
Mr. Anderson?
Sorry, aye.
Mr. Mattson?
Aye.
Ms. Lukowitz?
Aye.
Mr. Clooney?
Aye.
Chairman Flynn also says aye. The preliminary, preliminary plan is approved.
Excellent, thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you very much.
Sorry about that. I couldn't see the, the papers. I had to put some lights on.
No problem, Mr. Kenny, did a great job.
Yeah.
Seven point three is a public hearing. I will be recusing myself from this plan. So uh, Mr. Clooney, could you take over?
I'm gonna take over, I'm gonna turn off my volume and you turn yours on.
I will. Okay, next item, seven point three. The Oaks at Hope Furnace is a public hearing for a major land development. Uh, we're at the preliminary plan stage. Property is located on uh Hope Furnace Road designated as assessors plat lot six and, and assessors plat eighty-nine lot three in the RR two rural residential zone. And um, who's present for the applicant, please?
Good evening, attorney Nicole Martucci of the law firm of Duck and Sweeney at three two one South Main Street in Providence, Rhode Island. On behalf of the applicant, can everybody hear me okay?
Yes.
Yes.
Um, with me this evening is our engineer Eric Prevy of Dupree Engineering as well as Bob and Bo DeLoyes, the developers of this lot. Uh, before the board this evening is a preliminary plan submission for a thirty-two lot residential subdivision at the Oaks of Hope Furnace, which is located in the central portion of Coventry, uh, along the Coventry-Situate Town Line. The site is approximately eighty-four acres and is located, uh, as you already heard, on assessors plat ninety-seven lot six and assessors plat eighty-nine lot three. The site is presently not occupied with any existing dwellings. It's just a forwarded undeveloped area uh, and is located within a rural residential RR two zone um on the town zoning map. Um, this project received master plan approval back in November of two thousand and fourteen. And after tolling and a couple of extensions, we're here before the board this evening um on preliminary plan. Uh, a request for preliminary plan approval. Um, Eric Prevy has designed the plans and can walk the board through the details of those plans. And then um, we just have a couple of things that um, minor comments or modifications uh to present to the board with respect to uh the plans themselves. So I'll hand it over to Eric at this point.
Good evening for the record, Eric Prevy, P R I V as in Victor E., registered professional engineer with Dupree Engineering. Offices at two Stafford Court in Cranston, Rhode Island. Uh, Mr. Chairman, is it okay if I share my screen so I can walk you through the plans?
It is. And it would be helpful, um, Eric, cause I, I know some of the board members weren't here, but I was here when this was concerns development. Um, just i- if anything's changed since master plan, it would be helpful if you pointed that out.
Sure, can do. Uh, let me get everybody to the site first, cause as you mentioned, this is gonna look new to some of the members. It's not like we were just here recently with the master plan. So um, as, as mentioned, it, it's located on assessors plat ninety-seven lot six. It's a, and assessors plat eighty-nine lot three. So we got two lots of record today. It's located directly off of Hope Furnace Road. So obviously Hope Furnace Road runs from a uh, uh, east-west right along the uh northern portion or the uh Situate Coventry line here as well, um, directly west of Aster Lane. So Aster Lane is located right here. So it's just directly west of that. Uh, and is directly east of uh Hope Furnace Estates, which is located over here. So just kinda getting you acclimated with, with uh which portion of town we're in. Uh, also, the, the, uh, it is zoned RR three, so rural residential three, uh, sorry, RR two. Uh, rural residential two. Uh, rural residential two acre zoning out here, I apologize. Uh, and the surrounding area is all RR two as well, so, uh, the surrounding area is single family dwellings with, uh, two acre density as well. Gonna zoom in, um, actually, it's a wooded vegetated site. Uh, I'll go to the existing conditions actually now, so I'm now I'm flipped over to sheet four in your packets. Uh, we have turned sideways just cause, uh, it was a better, uh, fit for the site plans. So now, uh, just to let you know, uh, north is to the left, uh, over here. So Hope Furnace Road is located directly on the, on the left side over here now as well. Uh, we got approximately four hundred feet of, uh, frontage on Hope Furnace Road here. It is a wooded site, it is a vegetated site, there's, there are no improvements on it today. Uh, there are no buildings, no, no dwellings, uh, it is a fully wooded site. Um, there is one stone wall that goes through the, uh, the middle of the site here. Um, there is a off-site cemetery that's located directly off of Aster Lane, Aster Lane over here. That is not on the property, but I just wanted to note that for the record as well. Um, it's pretty moderate terrain throughout, um, it's, it's actually, uh, there's areas of, of flatter terrain as you can see in here. Uh, and then there's some areas that have kind of a more moderate terrain, but nothing, there's no severe to terrain as you're, as you're walking throughout the property. There is one, uh, wetland that's located on the site, it's in the southeast corner over here, it's a wooded swamp wetland. It's shown as the, uh, A series, uh, flagged wetland right over here, it is a wooded swamp wetland and it does have a fifty-foot perimeter wetland associated with it as well. Um, soils on the site are all very, very, uh, good soils, onsite sandy soils. Um, they're, they're the, uh, narragansett soils, uh, and, uh, good sandy soils, as we showed onsite. We do have, um, soil test pits all throughout the site. We do have two, and I'll go into it when I get into the, uh, proposed, but there are two test pits uh, at each leach field location, all of them have, uh, very good, uh, suitable groundwater tables uh, for the onsite septic systems. This area is serviced by, uh, private wells and onsite wastewater treatment systems. Uh, as I mentioned, with the soil testing too, that was all performed by a class four, uh, licensed soil evaluator and they were witnessed by the Department of Environmental Management as well. So they're all, uh, approved soil test pits all throughout the site here as well. Gonna move to the, uh, proposed development now. Uh, proposed development is a thirty-two lot, single-family residential subdivision. Um, we had provided the, uh, yield plan at master plan and established that yield, uh, back at master plan. Uh, it was for thirty-two lots, uh, and we are use utilizing the cluster configuration, which uh, allows, it's as you know, allows for reduction of lot sizes, uh, in lieu of, in uh, in order to have some, uh, open space on the site as well. So these, uh, still the overall density is no more, it's the same as what the conventional yield would allow. But the lots themselves are, uh, are able to be reduced to one acre lots in order to preserve, uh, that open space on site. Uh, we do have forty-five point five acres of open space on site, uh, which is subject to a potential modification, we'll get into after I conclude. Uh, but, uh, that is fifty-three point eight percent of the site as well. So, um, that's what the cluster is able to, to give is that preserved open space area as well. Uh, they, yeah, as I mentioned, it was all qualified at the master plan with the yield under the, uh, underlying two acre density zone. Um, it is a forty-two hundred square, uh, twenty, forty-two hundred linear foot, uh, P loop road. So that's located, uh, right here, uh, and th- this is the same as, um, what the master plan had. So, uh, Chairman Clooney, and the, the only changes are, would be very, very slight, uh, maybe slight adjustments of the radius being a little bit larger coming around. But overall, from the original master plan, this is the layout and how it came in. Um, we might, I think we slid this over maybe about twenty feet just because it worked better with grading in order to have less cuts and fills. Right, to minimize, I know that one of the, um, conditions of approval was to look at uh, minimizing disturbances and, and keeping tight tree lines. So that was able to do that by, by contouring the land better with cuts and fills. But this is the same layout as what the master plan had, it came in with the, with a road, uh, single road and the P loop road that came around here. Uh, it is proposed with thirty-two, uh, start, excuse me, thirty-foot, uh, pavement, and that was actually part of the master plan approval. Uh, so that is twenty-eight foot, uh, so fourteen-foot travel lanes and then Cape Cod burn, so full thirty-foot, uh, layout there. Um, it also does have sidewalk on one side of the road, which was a condition of approval for master plan as well. Um, we did see, and I'll, and I'll get into it a little bit later, but we did notice from the town engineers' comments uh, that there was a suggestion of possibly reducing the pavement to a, to a smaller layout, possibly down to twenty-six feet. Uh, and I'll get into that a little bit more later. Uh, the stormwater has been designed to meet DEM's best management practices. Uh, we do have, uh, three areas, uh, throughout the site that, uh, collects and, and discharge. Uh, we do have, uh, a water infiltration, uh, infiltration basin, uh, right in the front here that picks up any of the stormwater that comes off the first portion of and collects everything. We do have a set of catch cases that come right before Hope Furnace Road, so there's no extra nuisance runoff coming to Hope Furnace Road here. It's picked up and brought right in and treated and infiltrated directly on site here. We have a secondary basin located right here as well, and that also picks up the, the stormwater in this area and treats it and infiltrates it directly here. Uh, and then the remainder comes and goes into a detention basin with a sand filter for water quality treatment in advance, it has a sediment four bay for holding the sediments. Also goes in for water quality, uh, treatment within the sand filter here, that has a detention basin here, uh, that, that output. So as required, uh, we do have a net decrease from pre-development to post-development conditions for the two through hundred year, uh, frequency storm. Um, these stormwater practices were reviewed and approved by the Department of Environmental Management as, when we applied for the freshwater wetlands permit. Um, so we did, and, and, uh, received, excuse me, not just applied, but received the freshwater wetlands permit on site. Uh, as you know, the Department of Environmental Management has an engineer and a biologist that review this. Uh, both looking, the biologist typically is looking more at the wetland features and the engineer uh, reviews all of the stormwater calculations, grading, uh, soil erosion controls, operations and maintenance long-term for each of these, uh, stormwater practices as well. Uh, and we did receive the insignificant alteration permit from DEM as well. The lots are proposed, uh, as I mentioned, a single family lots. Um, that each lot has a private well onsite and an, uh, onsite wastewater treatment system. Um, we do have an approved, we have two approved test holes in the locations of each of the, uh, leach fields. Again, those were reviewed and approved by the Department of Environmental Management. We are currently pending with DEM for the, uh, subdivision suitability. Um, and we do understand that that would be, uh, subjects, uh, to, prior to final, that we would have to provide that uh, subdivision suitability to the town as well. The houses as well, the houses are actually tied into the drainage system, and that was a requirement, uh, to be collecting any of the roof runoff uh, as part of the master plan conditions as well. Uh, one of the conditions of approval is also that there'll be no grading within fifty feet of the cemetery. Uh, and we do not have any of that, we actually dimensioned it right on there, showing on the limited disturbance is, even though it's an off-site cemetery, there's no proposed disturbance within fifty feet of that, uh, off-site cemetery as well. Um, we do have two thirty thousand gallon fire protection cisterns as well, we have one located right here. And we have one located centrally to the site. Uh, again, those are thirty thousand gallons fire cisterns, they're located within a thousand feet of every house so that they, they have the runs, the run to be able to get to every house with less than a thousand feet of line. And, uh, one of the other conditions of approval that we have incorporated directly onto this plan, I'm actually gonna try and zoom in over here, we'll see if this works. Awesome. Uh, is site distances as well. At the master plan, we had provided a comprehensive, uh, traffic impact analysis, and that was provided by uh, R A B professional engineers, and they had, uh, as part of the recommenda- uh, recommendations for approval, there was some sightline improvements that they had, uh, requested out here. For eastbound traffic coming around on Hope Furnace Road here with the new road, with the new roadway being proposed here. Um, they re- recommended a twenty-five foot swath, uh, in this area to be able to clear for better sightlines for coming around this bend. So we have noted that and added that on the plans for, uh, sightline purposes to make sure that there's, uh, adequate sightlines coming around the bend there as well. Um, that's a general overview of it, and then, uh, I'm not sure if I, does anything, uh, I'd be happy to answer any questions or if there's, uh, anything else.
Um, uh, but before we get to questions, there are just, uh, two things that we wanted to note for the record. Um, the first is the open space, as I mentioned, um, there's the potential for modification that we would like to um, present to the board, um, to get some feedback on. The open space that we have right now on the plan is, um, forty-five acres, uh, which is about fifty-three percent of the site. Uh, that is about eight extra acres than, uh, we need to have. Um, a, a butter at, uh, AP eighty-nine Lot Three at six eighteen Hope Furnace has expressed interest in purchasing, uh, approximately three point five acres of that open site, which would still put us about five acres over what we would need. Um, and, uh, any potential, uh, transaction with, uh, Ms. Trenty uh, could include a restriction on development, uh, so that the, uh, develop, the non-developmental nature of the land would remain. Um, but it would be privately, those three point five acres would be privately owned. It would not impact any of the requirements for open space, we wouldn't need any, uh, relief uh, or variances, uh, per se, but because the plan shows forty-five acres, um, we are desirous at this point of reducing that by three point five acres, um, in order to, uh, appease one of the abutters. Um, the second, um, the second, uh, issue, as Mr. Preby mentioned, we did receive engineer comments yesterday from the town engineer. And the town engineer has, uh, respectfully suggested reducing the road size from thirty feet to twenty-six feet. Um, and we have no objection to that, and, and right now you see on the plans, a thirty-foot road with, um, but subject to the, the comments that we received yesterday, uh, we would be amenable to modifying that to twenty-six feet in order to, uh, satisfy the town engineer's comments.
Okay, um. Russell, if I could, um, I, we have lengthy engineering review comments that do not include any, anything regarding the road. And I'd like to just get a little bit more information, if you know, and I can't see you because this is sharing the screen right now, but, um. The three point five acres would be merged, I can't really tell which lot it would be merged with, is it someone that has frontage on Hope Furnace?
Uh, yeah, I don't know if Russ is gonna answer that, or if you were asking, if you were asking us, but yes, uh, Ms. Trenty has frontage on on the site, uh, and Mr. Preby can pull up hopefully where her site is.
Who is it?
I'm sorry?
Is it Shellborn?
That's what it's shown on, so this, uh, for Claire, this is our preview, the, um, yes, that's what is shown on the plan cause when the existing conditions were, was done, that's who the owner was at that time.
Okay.
It's actually, uh, lot, yeah, that was correct.
Okay, so it's lot one there.
Correct.
And where would the, roughly, where would the three point, would he just trying to square that off so he doesn't?
Here, the, the, the sketch, but what, what they were desiring for the sketch was approximately from this corner right here to this corner here, so it would effectively go kind of just, is it, yeah, exactly, straight across there, yep.
Okay, so he has a long driveway into that lot now, he really doesn't have significant frontage on Hope Furnace anyway, such that he could re, do any more development on the lot. Is that your impression, Russ?
It is, uh, it looks like, I can't, it looks like he just, all he has is a right of way to get to the property and across someone else's property. So it looks like to me that this is a landlocked piece. Well, it's a piece that has no frontage on Hope Furnace Road, but it has access via a right of way.
Correct, and I would not wanna see Mr. Bull, or, oh, I'm sorry, whoever it is back before us, because we put a restriction on the three point five acres, because he wants to redevelop the, I mean, we just saw a couple where someone wants to tear down an existing old house and put in a larger house. If he can't, if he can't really, the, redevelop or cut any more lots out of it, why would we even bother putting a restriction? He can just come for an administrative subdivision and come, you know, move the lot lines, is that correct? I mean, does that seem fair?
Uh, are you asking me, Rick?
Yeah, I'm just kinda saying, as opposed to putting a restriction on the lot, that.
Yeah, what I'd like to do, Eric, could you stop sharing for a minute, please?
Sure.
Uh, what I want to do is I wanna take a look at, um, what was that, eighty-nine one?
Yes.
Mr. Vice Chair, why, uh, he's looking for that, can I present a question?
Sure.
So, if they, just out of the gate, that doesn't change the plan type, right? What they're asking, it doesn't have to come in as a, a subdivision, right, a two lot subdivision, it's just, it's still gonna stay as a major land development?
Yes, it doesn't affect this project, all he's saying is they had more than enough open space to meet their, uh, requirements for the thirty-two lot subdivision. So rather than hang on to it, and a butter asked them if they could purchase three point five acres to enlarge their lot. Their lot does not appear to have any significant frontage on Hope Furnace Road that it could ever, you know, it's not like they're giving him three and a half acres and then he's gonna come in and look for two lots over there, it looks like he's only gonna always have one lot. And there it is, Russell's got it up on the screen, highlighted in yellow. So he just basically wants to square off where there's an indentation.
Yeah, based upon what Eric said, doesn't he wanna just like connect something like that, Eric?
Uh, yeah, yes, Mr. Crossman, yep.
Yeah.
I think, yeah, yep.
Okay, so, I don't know how the other board members feel, I, would anyone like to comment on that, favor, against, yea, nay? I guess if you have any objections, could you voice it now, please?
Yeah, I have no problem with it, Rick, it makes sense.
Rick, the only problem I have, I did take a, a ride to Hope Furnace Road and the cars flying back and forth were unbelievable. Um, what's gonna happen when all of these families are going in and out of that narrow windy road? That's a real concern.
Well, we're not, is, the subdivision that's before us already has master plan approval to come out to Hope Furnace Road, and they prevented it, provided a traffic study for the thirty-two lots. What we're talking about right now is that thirty-two lot subdivision had a significant amount of open space that they didn't plan to do anything with. And since they have excess open space than what the, the, uh, town would otherwise require, they're, they're simply asking, can they sell some of that proposed open space to this abutter, which Russ has highlighted his lot in yellow, he's already there, he has a single family house. He can't further divide that lot because he does not have any road frontage on Hope Furnace Road. So they just wanna see, uh, if we have any objection to them, uh, modifying what was approved in two thousand and fourteen to, uh, reduce the open space and convey this three point five acres to this, uh, person who has recently purchased this house on Hope Furnace Road.
Yeah, I understa- I understand that. Um, I just wanted to, uh, voice my opinion while I had the chance, uh, about that road in general, I mean.
Which road?
Uh, Hope Furnace Road, it was just, it was just so narrow. And I just, I can't imagine all those people coming in and out of that narrow road. And it's, to me, it could be a problem, that's, that's my opinion.
With all due respect, when we get to the public hearing, questions about this particular project, the thirty-two houses, what, what the applicant, uh, through, uh, his attorney has asked is, can we, before we get to that, do we have an issue modifying the open space area or reduce?
I don't.
Base area to sell this to the abutter, the abutter cannot add any traffic to Hope Furnace Road, he only has a single family dwelling there now. He just wants to enlarge his property. And selling this off does not otherwise change the approval they have for thirty-two lots, uh, coming out onto Hope Furnace Road now. Although, we still have before us, and it's public hearing, uh, the opportunity to discuss the, uh, the traffic study. The opportunity to discuss the, the traffic study that they've done. And I believe the town engineer has also made some other comments and there were some stipulations about. Coordinating with the police department for signage and improvements up at Hope Furnace Road to, to address the traffic. So that's, that we are going to deal with that, but I think they're just trying to get these two housekeeping issues. Out of the way first, so they know, you know, whether or not they, they can modify the plan and, and sell this off. This is going to require them to do an administrative subdivision to move a lot line right out of the gate. It's.
I have no problem with that.
Does any other board member have any comments regarding the sale of the three point five acres to the abutter?
Mr. Reeves has no problem.
No objections. Glenn Anderson, no objections.
So it, so it sounds like that's, that's not an issue. The second item on the road frontage, I would like to, Russell, I mean, I, 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 I understand stormwater management now. Everybody's looking for, for thinner or narrower asphalt streets to reduce the amount of impervious soil. I, I have, I probably, I don't recall, but at master plan approval. Usually people come in and ask for waivers to reduce the street widths. I have usually been an objector to that. Because when there's only one way in and one way out, and I'm familiar with it in, in, in a subdivision not far from here. When we end up with heavy snowstorms and the trucks continue to pile the snow and pile the snow and pile the snow. There's only one way in and one way out, and when you get a school bus and a garbage truck trying to pass each other. It can, it can present a problem. So I would like, I, I don't have the engineer's request in front of us. I don't know if it was part of our packet. But I'm just kind of trying to balance here the need to maintain traffic in both directions at all times with the need to. You know, manage stormwater.
The request should have been in the second packet that you received on Monday. I believe there was all of his.
One-page letter. But is that the sole reason? I mean, does it make, I, I guess from the.
Yeah, what he's trying to do is he's trying to help them out with the stormwater management. He's trying to reduce the amount of impervious surface. Eric, could you put the picture back up, please? Share the screen, the other picture? Thank you.
Russ, just for the record, the memo that we, we are referring to is dated May tenth, twenty twenty-one. From Bruce Hagaman to Russ Crossman, and we're particularly focused on item number twenty on page three of three.
Okay, yep, I have that. In fact, I flipped through and I didn't see this. Compare it to the post from the design, the conditions. Oh, okay, recommends P, okay, twenty-six feet.
So you know, I, I'm looking at this and this is just. I, I, I don't know that, right now they're calling for two fourteen-foot travel lanes with one foot Cape Cod berms. What Bruce is asking, correct me if I'm wrong, two twelve-foot travel lanes with one foot berms.
That's our understanding, Mr. Crossman, yes.
Yeah, I mean, and I, I'm, what I'm doing is, the reason I asked to bring the plan up. I wanted to see how much room they had in the driveways if they had guests. I don't envision a lot of people parking on the street here. I mean, it looks like there's a good. Ex- excluding the garage, there's a good stacking for four vehicles in those driveways if I'm not mistaken.
Sure.
Some maybe a little more. I would not have a problem with it, Rick.
Okay, and then could.
But again, it's, it's up to the board, whatever they'd like to do, you know?
What, what have we been approving right along? For like, what did we just do over at Ty Oak? The last thirty lot subdivision near Ty.
The Oak City Shore?
Yeah.
I do not recall. I'm sure Mr. DeBois knows off the top of his head. I don't have that right, I don't have that, Rick.
So we got sixty feet of right of way still, but you just want, they just want to pave less.
Uh, well, it's not them, it's the town engineer, yes.
Okay, let, let me, okay, so, so he's recommending that we pave up, but he still gets sixty foot of right of way. And the only other one, they're lot twenty down in the corner. Maybe that could be a double driveway or something because it looks like that one's a little closer to the road. But that's okay. All right, I'll, I'll, I'll defer to the, whatever the, whatever the board wants to do on that. We, we still, I see the sidewalk on the, it looks like it's on the outside all the way around. And then, let me see. That's still quite a distance. It looks like that driveway is at least thirty feet long. Okay.
Right, Mr. Kalunian?
Yes.
If the board is thinking. Of reducing the amount of impervious surface and reducing the pavement. I think they should also possibly envision, why, why keep the right of way at sixty? Why not reduce the right of way down? You make the lots a tad bigger, a, a, a small amount bigger. But maybe drop it down to fifty. If we drop it down to fifty, then we've got, we would have twelve and twelve, twenty-four, twenty-six. We would have twenty, then we'd have twelve feet. On each side off the edge of pavement that the town would still own as opposed to. Seventeen feet. With the sixty-foot right of way. I just think it's something the board should consider if they're looking to re, and I don't know how the applicant feels about that, but.
Well, let, let, I have one question then for, for Mr. Preby, and that is, do you feel that the engineer's comment in number twenty is? Is a, is that going to help you get your permit or is that just something he's envisioned as? Environmentally proven?
So this is Eric Preby. We, we absolutely support that. We typically like to have. Trying to find that balance between safety grass, yet at the same point also reducing stormwater. I mean, it's, it is, as I mentioned during the testimony, it's a forty-two hundred linear foot road. If you take four feet off of that, I mean, that's sixteen thousand square feet of impervious. That, that's a substantial amount of impervious for stormwater that can be reduced as well. Typically also Cape Cod berm. Feels, you know, it's, it's easier for travel lanes as well. It's not like a vertical face curve where people tend to, it feels tighter to people, you know, because they don't want to go near it. So, no, we, we absolutely would support the reduced as well. Matter of fact, we were holding per what the master plan was at the thirty feet. It has been designed as thirty feet as far as stormwater and such, so it would, it would be even better for stormwater. We would not. Look to reduce the size of it. We would just be able to just have better mitigations is what we would say.
In other words, right now, if you had to permit this with the detention bonds and everything that you have shown on this plan. You're confident you would otherwise obtain your stormwater permit. This is just kind of a plus for the environment.
This would be even, this would make the detention basins even more effective for mitigate, mitigating to pre-development conditions, yes.
Okay, and then how do you feel about reducing the roadway width? Because it looks like you're going to have a lot of survey work.
So, just to clarify, roadway or right of way?
Right of way.
Right of way? I'd have to look at that because other things are affected by that, including frontages that we've created out here. So if we reduce it sometimes on the, the, for instance, the ones that come around the bend, we, I just would need to look at that. That's all to make sure. Because if, you know, when you, when you tuck this in a little bit tighter, you need to make sure you have the, the adequate frontages on there. So I would just have to look at that, that's all.
Okay.
I have one more question, Mr. Kalunian, if I may.
Yes.
Eric, the. The rooftop runoffs. In the past, Mr. DeBois, he doesn't like to install them. What he, what he would rather do instead, he likes to increase the size of the detention ponds. Has that been done in this case? Proposing to install them?
Nope, it, uh, these are all piped into the, into the network that are coming into the pond.
Perfect, thank you, sir. I'm all set, Mr. Kalunian, thank you.
Mr. Vice Chairman, this is Michael Burke, I have a comment.
Yes, sir.
My, my initial reaction, I'm not, I understand that the reasoning for the street reduction, the width, the four-foot reduction. I'm not crazy about it. I, I would entertain, could we split the difference? You know, instead of a four-foot reduction in width, how about two feet? You know, you still keep some width to the roadway. And, and you help out with stormwater as well. If that's a possibility.
Anything's a possibility. Anyone else on the board have any comment regarding the roadway or the right of way width?
I like, I like to say one thing. I, I agree with Mr. Burke. You know, split the difference, um, because you might have a problem with the snow and trying to get buses and, and the garbage trucks and, and stuff like that. But I would split the difference.
Any other comments from the board regarding that issue?
Glenn Anderson, Mr. Chair, I have no problem leaving it as is. They provided adequate drain off of what they presented. I like the wider roads. But if you want to split difference.
Okay. I don't really want to segment the. Into, into the issues here, here at this point. Maybe we should just, well, does any other board members, well, let me just back up. I don't have a problem splitting the difference either. In fact, I think that's probably a good suggestion. And if the sixty-foot right of way remains the same and they don't have to re-engineer things, I think that's probably a, a pretty reasonable compromise. It, without objection, of course, if somebody objects, we can, we can always revisit that, but, but maybe just one more thing. Now, this, this memorandum that we got on May tenth and, and it has a, it's quite lengthy. It's three pages, twenty-one comments. Is there anything on here that has not been addressed or that the applicant or their engineer has, has an issue with?
Chairman Kalunian, for the record, Eric Preby, we did just receive this, but I did get a chance to go through them. We have not addressed any of them. As we just received them recently, but there is nothing that seems problematic. It seems like we can satisfy. The town engineer's concerns.
Mr. Chair, Glenn Anderson. So Eric, you just, you, so this is dated May tenth, so you haven't had it for the six weeks?
We got it yesterday.
Okay.
Okay, so, but for example, and I think Russell touched on this, for the roof drain connections, lots one through seven and nine through whatever. The town prefers to have these drains as short as possible. You're not going to do it that way anymore. You're going to tie into the main drainage system for the subdivision, so that comment goes away.
Can, can you mention the comment number again, please?
Sure, seven and eight. And maybe nine.
No, they would, for the record, Eric Preby, the, no, he's, he's requesting that they be just shorter runs. So we do have them already currently shown as tying in to the drainage system. He's requesting that the actual trunk line, the actual drainage pipe out in the street be extended. So that the service can be shorter on it as well. So we, we have no, no issues with that.
Okay, and how about raising the house foundations? I know you said you had good water tables out there for your soil, you know, for your septic systems, but he's, he's requesting that. House foundations on ten, twenty-three and twenty-four.
We, we have no issues i- if, if, if it truly is in conflict with the seasonal high ground water table, then we absolutely would be picking it up anyway. So, no.
All right, so I think we pretty much hit on, hit on all that stuff. Does anyone else on the board have any questions before we open this up? This is a public hearing before we open this up to the public.
Mr. Chair, Glenn Anderson, I just want to follow up on the. Director's report and you, you, you did, you did do a traffic study, Eric?
Mr. Anderson, we in two thousand fourteen with the master plan, yeah, traffic impact analysis was done. And thoroughly vetted at that time. And that's, that's one of the recommendations that came out of it, as I mentioned during the testimony, was the, the stopping site distance and making sure to have some improvements out here. So we do have that shown on these plans over here. To clear the vegetation around this bend. You can see how it's on the inside part of an elbow if you're coming eastbound over here. So it's on the, kind of the inside part of the elbow here, so that we do have a twenty-foot, twenty-five-foot swath, which would be clearing the vegetation. So that would allow for better vision coming around this bend. So if I'm a car driving eastbound over here, I can see if somebody's queued up to, to be leaving. To come out and pull onto Hope Furnace versus if, if all the vegetation was allowed to be what it is today. So that is, that is part of our, our proposed plans to cut that, to cut that back and create that, that site distance line. And that, that will be part of our, our homeowners to, to make sure that that is perpetually maintained.
Okay, and I know you, you know, you, I don't want to say inherited this, but you, you took. You're the new buyer, you, you know, new developer and. Well, I guess at, at the time, the Planning Commission, you know, really requested a, an ERT. A team get together and evaluate this. Are you opposed to, you know, just for that warm and cozy feeling, getting an environmental review team report together? This, it doesn't seem like a tall order and it might answer a lot of questions or concerns.
Yeah, so, so our understanding of that requirement was almost sort of a peer review of the. Traffic study that was already submitted in twenty fourteen. The developer would pay the expense if the town wanted to. Have the traffic study reviewed. I think we took the position that because we addressed the main item. The real main concern was that, that sightline improvement issue. We have never been contacted. With any requests for a, a peer review of the traffic study. If there's a specific item in that traffic study that the, the board has a concern with. Or an inquiry, an inquiry about and wanted to have that reviewed. We would be open to, to having that peer reviewed at the developer's expense. You know, as opposed to doing an entirely new traffic study. But we've never really been contacted with any request for that. That would be something that we would have to pay for.
Okay, and again. I'm not, everyone's a professional, the people you hire, it's just unfortunately it's always perceived, you know, otherwise by, by the public. And the traffic studies, it just, it'll just, it'll just add another feature to your, your development. If you were actually getting almost like a third party environmental review team report, that's all I'm saying. It might, just might help the case if anyone has an issue with the, with the traffic coming in and out. That's all.
I think the public comment will kind of give us some insight on that, but if the town has a third party. That they would like to have a peer review done on some of the specific issues that either the board has and public has. With respect to the traffic, given that the main issue was the sightline and we've addressed that, I don't foresee that there's any traffic issues. But if the board disagrees and wants to hire a third party peer review to do that at the developer's expense, that would certainly be within. Your discretion. But, but again, we, we've addressed the main issue with the traffic study in twenty fourteen that the town had, which is why I presume that we haven't. Been presented with any requests for a peer review because we've already addressed it, sort of suisse ponte, if you will.
All right, thank you. And the other one was the, and I don't know if we touched on it because a lot's been spoken, but. The Planning Commission back at the other development, they actually requested that you confer with the chief of police and commentary. Respect to proposed signage, now curve ahead and all that, just to take it to another level as far as safety and concerns of pedestrians and traffic.
We, we have not, this particular developer who is inheriting the project has not had direct communication with the chief of police. But understands that certainly as a condition of approval, if the chief of police requests certain signage for safety purposes. The developer would be financially responsible for, you know, whatever sign or two that the, the chief of police has. And, and as a condition of approval, we can have that conversation with the chief of police. But admittedly, we, we have not had that conversation to date, but we understand the financial aspect of being on the hook for those signs.
Okay, thanks for addressing my questions. I, I just think it's. Warm and fuzzy all around, the more eyes on this thing, the better.
Does any other board member have a question?
No, but I'd like to talk to you, Mr. Kalunian, if I may.
No, but I'd like to talk to you, Mr. Clonian, if I may.
Yes, sir. Go ahead, Russell first.
Okay, um, you and I, we were the only ones around back in fourteen, I believe, correct?
Perhaps.
Yeah, um, so I, with respect to the ERT, here, here's what I remember. I don't know that. I think the only thing they wanted that was really a concern, it was, you know, the amount of trips being generated by the proposed development. The level of service changing, you know, I, I don't think we got into the weeds on that. What I think was, the board was concerned about the site distance. I think that was the big thing. So if. Um, if the, i- if the board still felt. That it, you know, if they wanted to, to do away with the, I, I, and I believe I would defer to Dave D'Agostino on this one, but I believe they have the authority to. To waive the stipulation that was, um, given at master plan. But if they, if they didn't wanna have a third party look at it, I believe the only thing we would be looking at. Would be the safe stopping site distance coming out of there. How do you feel, Rick? Is that what you recall?
I, I actually don't recall, um. The details, but I will say that since then, seven years has passed. And the driving habits of people today are vastly different than they were seven years ago, and I'm not about to. I think we should maybe open this up to public hearing, see what the concerns of the residents are. I know Ms. Lukowitz is waiting to speak and she had some concerns and, um. We can address both, uh, that stipulation for the ERT because it said with respect to traffic. Site distances and traffic safety measures. And then there was the stipulation to confer with the police department to talk about signage. And if after broker the meeting, we'll, we'll broker the meeting.
And I, Rick, I just wanna follow up one more thing on that. Um, with respect to the signage, I know it said talk to the chief, but the town of Coventry does have a traffic safety committee. We are gonna be meeting right after the Fourth of July. Uh, it consists of myself, the DPW director town engineer, as well as the chief, the major and, um, one of the lieutenants. But, um. If signage is something you would like us to look at, uh, you could make that a stipulation and I will make sure that gets on. Um, that agenda and, you know, we have a discussion about, do we in fact need any proposed signage out there? And if so, what do we need?
Yeah, I think that's a good suggestion, so.
Thank you, Wes.
So let, let's just leave that. I, I just have one question, Sandy, I'm sorry, before we jump ahead. So I just wanna make sure the stipulations from master plan approval, and again, this is for the applicant. I believe the, uh, soil suitability determination to DEM has been submitted. That was the testimony tonight. The, uh, preliminary determination and verification of wetlands has been, that's been completed?
It has, uh, Eric, preview for the record, yes, we received the insignificant alteration permit from the DEM and provided that to the town, yes.
Okay, so the soil suitability is still, is still outstanding. The roof, roof runoff drainage systems, I believe we have taken care of and this, and you've addressed the stormwater existing vegetation, the clearance, other than what was at the street. You, you indicated you shifted the road to address that comment. So it seems like the only three outstanding issues are the ERT, the signage and the, um. Uh, soil suitability determination, which you've submitted, but have not received yet.
Correct.
Correct.
Thank you. Okay, uh, I'm sorry, uh, Sandy, did you have something to, uh, add? I, I'm, I couldn't tell if you're, you started to talk before Russell did, or, or was it Mr. Kenny or both?
Uh, no.
They're all set. Mr. Kenny, did you have something?
Yeah, Rick, I just wanted to let you know, uh, the Oaks, um, the east shore, it was, the roadway was twenty-eight feet wide. Um, I didn't see where we reduced it at all, just for edification. I know we've already went over that. And I have no problem splitting, splitting the difference out to twenty-six versus twenty-four, twenty-eight, so.
Well, the, the recommendation was twenty-six, they have thirty, so splitting the difference would be twenty-eight, which would be consistent with the Oaks.
Hey, my math isn't so good, but I agree.
Okay, okay, and that's, and I kinda liked the twenty-eight myself. I just know that the narrow, the twenty-fours and the twenty-sixes just don't work if we have two or three snowstorms in a row. Because I've been stuck at the end of the street trying to get into somebody's driveway and letting the, uh, the, uh. Trash collection truck go by to turn around in a cul-de-sac. Okay, so, uh, that said, if, if, if none of the other board members have any immediate comments and you will have another opportunity to speak, I'd like to open it up to public hearing. I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion, open up public hearing.
I second.
We have a motion by Mr. Kenny, second by Ms. Lukowitz, uh, take a roll call vote. I can't see the members, so, um.
Could, could we turn off the, uh, share screen, please?
Yeah, okay. Uh, Mr. Rays.
Aye.
Mr. Matson.
Aye.
The Burke.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Mr. Kenny.
Aye.
Ms. Lukowitz.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye, so seven to zero. Okay, public hearing is open. Do we have anyone in the public?
Mr. Flynn, could you, uh, Mr. Mr. Clonian, please, um, Cody, are you out there?
I am.
Alright, I have to step away for five minutes. Could you, um, let people in, please?
Yes, I can.
Thank you.
If anyone from the public on this call, and it looks like we've got, uh, about eight attendees. Wishes to speak for or against or has a comment or concern about this application that's before us tonight, now's your chance, just raise your hand on the, uh, on the Zoom app. Going once, I don't see any hands. Is that correct, Mr. Cody?
Oh, we have one request, I'm gonna.
Yeah, okay, that's Dina O'Brien. You wanna bring her in?
Ms. O'Brien, you're on the call.
Ms. O'Brien, did you have your hand up? Looks like she put her hand down, is that correct?
I lowered the hand.
I'm sorry?
I lowered her hand. I always do when I bring people in.
Okay, so is she in?
Yeah, she, she should be able to make comments.
Ms. O'Brien, is she down? Ms. O'Brien? Ms. O'Brien? Ms. O'Brien, one more time? I can't hear her. Can anyone else hear her?
No.
No.
Okay, um. Does anyone, is there anyone else, um, that wishes to, I, 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 I don't know how to address this. Um, it looks like our microphone's on, her hand isn't up anymore, so is she trying to get in or?
Hey, Rick, Rick, recognize, uh, Dave, he has a comment on.
Yes, Mr. D'Agostino, you're muted.
Yes, um, thank you, um, Mr. Vice Chair. So, um, my, my recommendation is, um, to, uh, to Ms. O'Brien. Uh, there are call-in numbers available and, um, tho- those are posted on the, uh, agenda. And, um, if, if she is desirous of making a comment, I would ask her to raise her hand. And then to follow that up with a call and we'll have Cody recognize her when she comes on the call. Because maybe she accidentally, um, you know, wanted to indicate participation. I think, um, you know, we're obviously recording this. I, I think it's, if, 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 if she would like to make a comment, if you could ask her to raise her hand. And then, um, have her call in using one of the call-in numbers. I think that would be appropriate.
Yeah.
She has raised her hand again.
Yes, her hand is up again and I don't know, uh, Ms. O'Brien, you might wanna make sure your microphone is not muted on your device. Or, or as, uh, Mr. D'Agostino suggested, use the call-in number and call in on a cell phone. Cause we can't hear you. Cody, you wanna try bringing her in again? Ms. O'Brien, can?
Cody, did you bring her in as a participant?
No, I just allowed her to talk. I can try bringing her in as a participant.
Yeah, why don't you try that, please? That will move her right in because she might have an older version.
Uh, it could be. It normally tells you if, uh, if they have an older version. I think.
I'm gonna try promoting her to panelist. I.
I just did.
Okay.
Okay, so is she in? Because, uh, she's not on the guest list anymore.
Give her a minute, she'll show up. She's back outside again. Let me try, Cody, um.
There she is.
Let me see if I can try promote.
She's in. I think her mic isn't working. Mr. Brian, if you can hear us, the, in the bottom left of your, your Zoom screen, you'll see the, the, um, microphone icon. The little arrow next to it, you can select your microphone. We might just have the wrong mic selected. If you could try changing that.
Ms. O'Brien?
Hello?
Okay. Um. Ms. O'Brien, I think we're gonna have to do what the, uh, what our legal counsel suggested and ask you to call in with another device. We can keep public hearing open. If there's no one else speaking, we can still wait a few minutes and, and allow you to speak. Either that or you've gotta do as Cody suggested and, and try to straighten out whatever microphone you're using with your device. There are choices to use, like the one that came with the device or a different one or plug one in.
You know what, guys? Do you mind if I just give her a phone number to try?
That's fine.
Okay, um. How about, uh, I don't know if you can hear me, Ms. O'Brien, but if you would've tried. Um, one, eight, seven, seven, eight, five, three, five, two, four, seven.
Could you repeat that just to make sure she got it?
Eight, seven, seven, eight, five, three, five, two, four, seven.
Okay, um, and while we're waiting for her to call in, let me just, there, there's no one else, um. It doesn't look like there's any more hands raised. Is, are any of the other attendees, uh, wishing to speak on this particular application tonight? While we wait to see if Ms. O'Brien calls in.
She's back in. I don't know if she's in on phone this time or.
No, it has her name still.
Dave, how do you wanna handle this?
Well, you know, I think that, uh, I, I, I think that we've mentioned to her to call in, there's call-in of numbers available. Um, I think what we should do is we should, uh, you know, give her a reasonable opportunity to, uh, uh, to, to call back in. And, uh, quite frankly, I, I, I think we, we certainly have some time before, uh, the, before the board closes public hearing. And, um, uh, and, and takes, uh, takes this matter under advisement. I, I think that what, what we can, should do is we should just try to keep an eye out, uh, Cody, um, uh, an eye out for someone calling in. And if, uh, if she does call in, then, uh, then we can proceed. I, I think I know the answer to this, but, um, I, I, uh, I don't think that. Director Crossman has received any written comments. Obviously, people can submit written comments as well. I, I don't mean to presume that Ms. O'Brien would know that. But, uh, I, I think the thing to do is let's, let's continue. If you do close the public hearing, I, I would suggest closing the public hearing, subject to allowing Ms. O'Brien to come back in. If she's able to connect by telephone, uh, before the end of the, before the, before this matter is concluded. I think that's the fairest thing, um, and, uh. Under the circumstances.
And, okay. She's not in the attendee list anymore. She just went away after you spoke, so maybe she will call in. I don't see any other hands from attendees that wish to speak. So we'll keep public hearing open and I will now give any of the board members an opportunity to speak or ask questions or comment on this application. Does anyone on the board have any further comments, questions regarding this?
Mr. Vice Chairman, I have a question, just to, uh, for my own information and take up, I, it'd take up some time if she decides to call back in. Um, I think I know the answer to this, but I'm not certain. The fire cisterns, once they're installed by the applicant, um, who is ultimately responsible? Maintenance, upkeep, things like that, if something were to go wrong, if one of them were to crack. I know I didn't see anything in the homeowners association information. Who is, uh, ultimately responsible for that?
I don't know the answer. Mr. Crossman, do you know the answer?
Uh. I don't, but my assumption would be that there would be the HOA. And it looks like Attorney, uh, D'Agostino is agreeing with me.
Yeah, I mean, um, the, uh, the, the cisterns benefit the development. Uh, you know, they're, they're, obviously they're required by, uh, by the, uh, uh, Fire District Authority, but they benefit the development in the event of a fire. So if they, if they cracked or failed in some fashion, it would have to be on the, uh, HOA to get those repaired. Um, as a, as a public safety improvement, it's really under the jurisdiction of the Fire District, so. You know, they require it if, you know, the, the requirements are incorporated into the planning board's decision. But in terms of if that type of improvement were to fail or need to be replaced in some fashion, that would have to be the responsibility of the HOA.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I, I mean, if, if I, if I can just comment briefly, um, you know, and, and we don't have a decision one way or the other in that matter, but. Um, I would think that the fire department would want some control over how things are maintained. And if there's any significant maintenance that needs to be done, I, I don't think that it would be appropriate to leave that to a private HOA. Um, I would, I would assume that the fire department would have some control or input over what's maintained and how it's maintained. Um, but, you know, that, that's my two cents for what it's worth.
Mr. Chair Glenn, and just, just on that, I, I was just curious, so, you know, who, there is an annual or a quarterly or semi-annual inspection by the, uh, local fire district on these. On these, uh, cisterns, is that, is that protocol? And I think the, the, the comment was, you know, if they say. Whoever expects it says, hey, by the way, it needs, it needs, it needs, and I think that's when the, the, uh, HOA is responsible for those needs. Is that how we all understand it?
No, I, 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 I think, uh, the attorney for the applicant just brought up a, a good point that it might not be in the best interest. Of anyone to have the HOA responsible for the maintenance, so, um, my suggestion would be, um. If there are concerns about this, is to just say that at the next, uh. Approve, you know, at final approval, we get a determination as who's gonna maintain the cisterns going forward, such that it, it doesn't end up being the town of Coventry.
And, and we can meet with the chief too, um, you know, directly, um, as a developer, we can meet with the chief and see what, what the fire department has to say about it. And then do whatever the fire department says, right? We all want everybody to be safe. Um, so we have no problem meeting with the chief and, and deferring to them on how they wanna proceed with that. Uh, we would request.
That was my, that was kinda my suggestion. Wait, meet, meet again with the fire department and whatever they, uh, whatever they stipulate, that's what you will present at final approval.
Right, a- a- and just for the record, we, we, uh, would be requesting that final be, uh, administrative. Um, uh, but certainly that could be a condition that, you know, we can, we can, uh, defer to the chief of the fire department on how he wants us to proceed with that. But just so that it's clear, we would be requesting that final plan approval be done administratively.
Okay. Cody, I see a new number up there, 517-449-8797. Was that there before?
It wasn't.
All right, you want to see if that's Ms. O'Brien? I don't know how she would raise her hand if she's calling on the phone.
She can raise her hand, but if she doesn't know how, I can just bring her in and then if it's not her, we can plainly ask them to leave.
Yeah. Yeah, maybe we can, let's just try it just to make sure we've covered all bases here.
Letting them in now.
They muted anyway, so. Hello?
Hi, can you hear us?
Yes, who is this, please?
Hi, it's Dina O'Brien and Kevin O'Brien.
Oh, good, I'm glad you. We're much, we much prefer that we got you in so we could hear your comments and not have concerns that we.
Yeah, no problem. So my husband and I live at 622 Hope Furnace, which is right around the bend from the new development. And actually, the same builders built our house as well. And so we've talked to some of our neighbors once we had received the letter from the attorney about the hearing today. And I guess our biggest concern is just what is going to be done about the traffic? And I know that there's been a lot of discussion when the board was talking. And I guess my biggest question is, is there, you're talking about a study that was done in 2014, which was seven years ago and there, like, our house is new. It came up in 2017 as well as two of the houses near us. So there is a lot more traffic now on the road and adding 32 houses, what's gonna be done for the traffic? Hope Furnace is a narrow road where the speed limit is 25 miles an hour, but no one drives 25 miles an hour. Everyone speeds down the road. There is no signage, there's barely any stop signs. So I guess that's kind of our biggest concern is what is going to be done about the traffic, if anything.
If we could respond to Ms. O'Brien, a couple of things. The signage would be addressed with the Chief of Police. So, you know, if there is required signage, that would certainly be added, which would address that concern. The road is striped now. And then the traffic study from 2014, the town engineer has not made any comments. They've made multiple comments, three pages worth, on the plans. They haven't made any comments about the traffic study because, again, we sort of unilaterally addressed the site vision issues that they had previously. I think that if the town engineer had any issues with traffic or concerns with the traffic study, that would have been addressed in the report. Again, if the town has a third party that they would like to engage at the developer's expense to review that site vision issue again, just to make sure that our plans are adequately addressing the town's concerns, we would be amenable to that. Or defer to the town engineer on the issue, who's certainly more than capable of making a determination with respect to whether our proposal with the site improvements would be adequate. But there would be signage, it is striped, and the town engineer has not raised any particular issues. So hopefully that will address some of your concerns.
So when you're talking about sightlines, are you talking about the sightline exiting and entering the development?
This is Eric Crevey, the civil engineer for the project. The, yeah, so the area where, on your bend, so you live, I believe, two houses down from where the engine would be. So on your, you're on the inside part of that bend there, right? So the inside, it takes a turn to the right if you're going eastbound towards like Cranston, for instance. So that whole inside area would have a clearing. As part of the recommendations of the traffic study, it was recommended that additional sightlines be brought in. So as you come around the bend, as it starts to turn to the right past your house, as you're coming to where this development new would be, there's a 25-foot clearing would be come back, taking the existing vegetation that kind of grows around that bend today. That would all be cleared back an extra 25 feet to provide a better sight distance. So then as somebody's coming around that bend, they can see oncoming traffic. They can see if a car is queued up at the new, at the new entrance or even at Astor Lane that's right, you know, right down from there as well. They can see better coming around that bend as well. So that has been incorporated directly onto the plans, Ms. O'Brien.
Okay, thank you. So then my other question is, if, so there's gonna be the clearing for the sightline. It's really dark where our houses are and where the new development is going to be. So then is there gonna be any lighting? Because when it's pitch black outside, you can't, you can't see anything where our houses are. So then what happens then?
If I could, just for a second, as you may or may not know, the Fire and Lighting District takes care of street lighting along Hope Furnace Road. And at the risk of maybe embellishing a little bit, we're really talking a couple of different issues if I understood you correctly. We're trying to address the safety and the intersection with 32 cars are gonna be entering and exiting the new development as it relates to the traveling public that's already on Hope Furnace. And then the second issue, which I think is the one you were alluding, since you're west of this development and most of the traffic would be going in the opposite direction. It's not like they're gonna increase traffic in front of your house, is the volume of traffic on Hope Furnace Road. Their traffic study, I believe, addressed the road width and the existing striping will accommodate the additional traffic, notwithstanding any violations of traffic laws such as speeding. So they're challenged with safety at the intersection for cars entering and exiting their project and any conflicts with cars traveling on Hope Furnace Road as opposed to the fact that Hope Furnace Road, some people may consider it to be substandard for the volume of cars that currently come from anywhere west of your house and are in a hurry to get to work, heading towards 116 and may be speeding. So there's kind of two different issues, so I just wanted to throw that out to you. So what we're suggesting is that, or what possibly will be suggested is is to have an independent traffic engineer review the data that they submitted as part of their traffic analysis and make further recommendations if necessary. And also to have them meet with the Coventry, it's not just the police chief, but they have a committee that, you know, recommends signage and traffic calming measures throughout town to reduce speed and enhance safety on roadways. So that's kind of the direction it's going.
Okay, thank you. I guess then my last question is, will we find out anything else about this project? Like, are there any other public hearings that we can attend? Or is this kind of the only opportunity we have to find out anything?
Well, since you moved in in 2017 and they're asking that if this, if they're successful tonight in obtaining their approval to put in the 32 houses, that once they've checked all the boxes and adhered to all the town regulations, that they would just be allowed to go administratively. There was a public hearing on this just to get the initial site plan, like the basic concept of 32 house lots, that was done in 2014. So there was a public hearing, but you weren't notified because at that time you weren't in the butter.
Okay, all right, thank you.
I do have one, this is Kevin O'Brien, Dina's husband. Sorry, I know it's getting late, so I appreciate you giving us some time when we had some technical difficulties. Appreciate you answering the questions there. I do have one other kind of unrelated question in regards to, I'm assuming these 30 lots would be, I think you mentioned it, they would all have wells. Has there been any studies with wells in that area? Will it be able to support the 30 and potentially would that have an impact on the well water supply in our, on our three lots that we have here? So, you know, 620, 622, and 624.
Mr. Chairman, I can answer that if that's okay?
Sure.
Okay, for the record, it's Eric Crevey, Mr. O'Brien, the civil engineer. So yeah, no, the wells have not been drilled yet, but as part of the, they're all private individual wells. So the each house lot would have its own private well. And that would go through just a standard process with the building permit process as well, with similar to having an onsite wastewater treatment system permit. During that, they would drill a well, they would look at what that yield is onsite. Typically, the hydrology of that area is not that 32 homes are gonna be creating well issues for other people. I mean, there's multiple varials when you're drilling wells, distances and depths of how deep they go. It depends which fractures you hit within the bedrock and such. So, no, there is no pre-done wells that would be done at this time. At the same time, it would be part of the building permit process and we do not envision that, given the density out here, the density is greater than, you know, over one unit per, over two acres for each one. So that's not an intensity that typically creates a well draw that would make any issues to any surrounding properties, including, we do have 45 acres of open space that'll be kind of an undisturbed area that is also as well. So we don't envision issues with the private wells, but it's also not something that would have been provided at this time, Mr. O'Brien.
Perfect, thank you very much. And one last question. I have to apologize. I believe the 45 acres of undisturbed land that you're mentioning does fall predominantly like directly behind where our house is. Is the plan for that, and may not know the answer to this, but is that going to be on disturbed land kind of gonna be maintained as woods going forward?
Mr. O'Brien, this is Eric Crevey again. There is no active, as part of the design process, if there was any proposed trails or any proposed anything as part of that, that would be required as part of our submission package. We are not proposing any trails. It would be more like it's just a passive recreation area. So people could use it to walk through the woods, just like any tract of land. But no, there's nothing actively proposed back there, Mr. O'Brien.
Thank you, Eric.
And Eric, to clarify, for the 32 homeowners, it's not open to the public?
That's correct, Chairman Colognean. Yes, that would be the open space for the homeowners. That is correct.
Thank you. Okay, we all set, Mr. and Mrs. O'Brien?
Yeah, thank you so much.
You're welcome, you're welcome. I'm glad you were able to get through. Okay. Would anyone else from the public? Does anyone else from the public wish to speak on this, for, against, comments, concerns, or questions? I don't see any more hands. Does anyone else on the board have any questions or additional concerns or comments they wish to have addressed during the public hearing? If not, I will entertain a motion to close public hearing.
Mr. Chair Glenn Anderson, I was just hoping that the O'Briens were on, just follow up on their on their question of the site and the visibility, which was addressed several times consistently. Again, much like the cisterns, who's on, is the association on the hook to maintain that sightline? I know the, you know, the town will do only, you know, so much. Who's gonna maintain that sightline in five, 10 years? It would be gone.
The homeowners association will be responsible for that.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, if no one else has any comments, I'll entertain a motion to close public hearing.
Motion to close public hearing, second.
Okay, so I have a motion from Carl Mattson and a second by James Kenny. Any discussion? If not, I'll take a roll call vote. Mr. Rayes?
Aye.
Mr. Mattson?
Aye.
Bert?
Aye.
Mr. Anderson?
Aye.
Kenny?
Aye.
Ms. Lukowitz?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Public hearing is closed. Cody, could you move the the O'Briens back into participant if that needs to, I don't know how you deal with that. I see this still on the screen. Doesn't matter, I guess. Okay, so here we are. Does anyone else on the board have anything else they would like to add or any more questions? Just one more time, just to make sure we've covered all the items that people may may need to have addressed before I entertain a motion with regard to the preliminary approval? Hearing none? Would anyone care to make a motion for or against approval of the preliminary plan?
Mr. Chair Glenn Anderson, I'll make a motion if you'll have it. I just have one question. The road, the modification to the road, did we, is that have to be a stipulation? Or has that been addressed and finalized to be shortened from whatever it was to, I think, 28 we said?
I think it would be a good idea to include the, both the, that the master plan, the the preliminary plan modification since master plan of reduction of the roadway width to 28 feet paved and also the ability of the applicant to dispose of 3.5 acres to the abutter should be incorporated into the motion.
Expose. Okay, Mr. Chair, stab at it. I'd like to make a motion for a conditional approval for the preliminary plan for the major land development. The project named the Oaks at Hope Furnace. The applicant, DeBois Building Company, owner, Hopkins Hill Investment LLC, address Hope Furnace Road, AP 97 Lot 6, AP 89 Lot 3, Zoned RR2. It's currently undeveloped. They're looking to create a residential subdivision. This is gonna be a 32 lot, single-family residential cluster development. Some of the finding of facts that I'll read. The criteria would be the consistency with the comprehensive plan. The future land development, the future land use elements identified in the neighborhood is low-density residential and MDR. And the proposed land development project meets the criteria that defines low-density residential. This includes but not limited to the lot size, availability of public services, transportation access, and public utilities. The proposed 32 lot residential cluster development is consistent with the Town of Coventry Comprehensive Community Plan. The criteria of significant negative environmental impacts, or the proposal, you know, will not likely have significant environmental impacts. The subdivision will be reviewed by the town engineer and the Rhode Island RIDM to ensure that the project conforms to both the local and state regulations with respect to stormwater management, onsite wastewater treatment systems, the quality of the stormwater leaving the site, the implementation of best management practices, the BMPs, which may include either sand filters or bio-retention filters and provide the underground control of rooftop runoff. As it relates to the zoning standards, the subject property is Zoned RR2 and the proposed density is within the limits established by the zone. Regarding the traffic impacts, the proposed 32 lot subdivision development will not have a significant negative impact upon the adjacent roadways. The statement is based upon testimony provided at master plan. I'm gonna render the conditions. One would be is that the applicant is subject to receiving RIDM subdivision suitability approval in respect to the OWTS. Second stipulation, review by the Town's Traffic Board for this road, for this development and the roadway and its safety. I'd like to see the Town's Traffic Board or Committee or Department, whatever it's called, to include a quick study of that area. And I'd also like the town engineer's input also as a stipulation. The other condition. The other condition would be to reduce the reduce the roadway into the neighborhood to twenty eight feet pavement paved area. And for the to expose the three point five acres to the to the abutter as discussed earlier. And pretty sure I would just like to add the planning deck director's report to my motion. And that's it.
Do you have a second?
Second.
We have a second. Do we have any discussion? All right, Mr. Anderson, I just have
Colonel, can I make?
Yes.
I just wanted to make one statement. I just wanted to let Mr. Anderson know that the scope of the traffic safety committee is strictly going to be with respect to signage. That that's really it's all that's within our purview. You said would like to do us a traffic study. That's not what we do.
This this Mr. I was going to bring that's exactly what I was going to bring up, Mr. Cross.
Okay.
Mr. Anderson, would you either please clarify, confirm, or perhaps reword your motion? I think what you were looking to do was to enforce the stipulation that was issued at master plan approval that an environmental review team report be performed with regard to the traffic in the site distance and the traffic safety measures and that the developer confer with the the police chief and the board that Mr. Crossman just referred to with regard to signage and other traffic related things that might need to be done out there.
So, yes. And no, I don't feel an environmental review team is needed. I think locally our our traffic board can just review for signage and the town engineer, I believe, can get eyes on it, has has discussed and just give an opinion on the matter, if that's sufficient. I don't know if it's too vivid.
I'm okay with that, Mr. Cologne, and if the rest of the board is.
Okay, so if that was the intent of his motion, then we'll leave it as is, okay? Any other comments?
Mr. Crossman, if I just may add, we did request a final approval administratively. I don't know if that needs to be a part of the motion or not.
It does. Thank you for reminding us. I'd like to amend your motion to
I would like to amend my motion to go to final adminis- administration.
Okay, and would you like to amend your second?
I amend my second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second.
Can I? Are we are we still in discussion?
Yes.
Think we're losing Sandy, by the way.
I was just going to suggest, have you got a phone? Before she ends up in the same position as one of our two board members.
Sandy!
Not going to work, Russ. Call her up.
Uh, I will. I think we should take a five minute break after this anyway.
I was going to suggest that.
By where was I going to go with this? My my question to the board is, what if, how do you? You're you're asking the town engineer to take a look at this. And there's there's nothing there for you to see his findings. So what I'm saying is, I have no problem coordinating with him, reviewing his findings and deeming them acceptable. But if there's anything, what if there's something that comes out at me that I feel the board needs to see? Dave, I see you nodding your head agreeing with me?
Yes, I agree. I think I think you raise a good point. I I think the way to approach it, if if I may, is that if something comes out at in that review that requires, you know, that that you're not comfortable with, Director Crossman, I think I think in that case it has to come back for final for final approval before the board. So I I don't I don't I because I think the board would have to then weigh in on that. I I think it's probably unlikely that that would occur. But i- if there's something that the director is not comfortable with, and there's a comment that comes back, only this board can appropriately deal with it.
And let me ask you a question. If there's a recommendation from the town engineer and the and the developer agrees to, let's say, cut back additional or make an additional improvement or perform additional work, at that point, is that acceptable? Do you still want to come back to the board?
No, no, that that would be fine. In other words, but but the I think the board, if there's if there's an issue that can't be overcome by agreement and and by the consent of the developer prior to final, I think the board has to weigh in on it. Because it's the it's the board's authority to do so.
Correct. And I would assume that if we said we want he can proceed to final administratively and there's a conflict, then yes, it would have to come back to the board to resolve the conflict, because it can't be then resolved administratively.
Yeah, and I think because I have I have the authority to handle it administratively, administratively, I could make the decision that it has to appear back before the board.
Yes.
Okay.
Russ, could you make that phone call?
I've tried cell and home, and they both went straight into voicemail.
Okay.
I don't know what else to do.
We still have a call. Okay. With that said, we have a motion. We have a second. I will take a roll call vote. Mr. Ayes.
Aye.
Approve. Mr. Mattson.
Aye.
Mr. Bert.
Aye.
Mr. Anderson.
Aye.
Mr. Kenny.
Aye.
What are you laughing at? Ms. Lukowitz. Chair votes aye. Motion carries. You're all set.
Thank you very much.
Certainly welcome. Okay, that's why don't we take a five minute recess? Give everybody a stretch break and give Mr. Flynn a chance to come back in and deal with the next item. So five minutes. That's
Anyone live near Sandy?
Yeah.
Cody, can you turn off her camera?
I I think we should have the minutes reflect that she she left the meeting at this at whatever time, eight forty seven. Okay, I'm going to mute my mic and
All right, we're going to take a quick break.
Ron.
Yes.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure you could hear me. My my screen, I it's kept a yellow ring around it, and I'm not talking. I couldn't figure out. I wanted to make sure it was working. Sorry.
So I'm back.
The last one got approved, by the way, just just in case you were wondering.
Okay. Hey, thanks. Thanks for taking over.
Motion was a little hack, but we got through it.
That's right. You did fine.
Well, it was fine.
Most of us got through it. I woke up Sleeping Beauty.
We're still recording here, guys.
I know.
Okay.
That was a good five minutes. Everyone back yet?
Ron, everyone's back. It's been ten minutes.
Okay. Are we ready to proceed?
Yes.
Okay. Seven point four, we have a public informational meeting. Master plan, major land development, proposed retail store owner, Michael W. and Kimberly holds. Applicant Garrett Holmes LLC. Proposal is to demolish the existing building and the construction of a new retail store with associated parking and site improvements. AP fifty six lots nine and eleven zone VMC four ninety five Washington Street in zero MacArthur Boulevard. Anybody here representing the applicant?
Yes. Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. Joseph Brennan from the Law Office of Joe Shikachi here on behalf of the applicant. Thank you. So the application that you have before you is for a proposed retail store for a major land development project at four ninety five Washington Street. It would consist of assessors plat slots nine and eleven. And we are in the Village Main Street Commercial Zoning District, as the chairman mentioned. First, I'd just like to say right off the bat, we had the pre-application meeting that we had a few months back. One of the big questions that the board asked was what use is going in there? Who's the tenant? Who's the applicant going to be? Um, at that time, and still, we were under a non-disclosure agreement, but it because we want to work with the town and be good applicants and, and new neighbors with the town, we got permission to disclose it and it's going to be a Dollar General. Um, that's the store that will be going in, um, as a proposed use, their national chain requires the square footage that we're applying for, the ten thousand six hundred and forty square foot building, which is why we're applying for it. Um, I will just make known that although it's named Dollar General, they're not actually a dollar store. If you were to walk inside, they do sell some foods, they sell some products and things and there's almost pretty much nothing in there that's actually for a dollar, they're kind of just your mainstream convenience store, um, from that regard. Um, so could to continue on with our application, um, that you saw at the pre-application meeting. Um, we will, the current lots that you have have been, uh, vacant for approximately two plus years now. They've had an array of restaurants come through over the years, none have seemingly proven to be, uh, very successful as they've been rolled over constantly. Um, what we'd be doing as part of our application is demolishing the restaurant, the buildings, all improvements around it and building a brand new building, um, from scratch. Uh, we would combine the two lots that are there to provide ingress and egress from two different streets, um, for safety reasons and traffic flow and provide parking. We would be asking for thirty-five parking spaces, although fifty-four are required. Um, we do have the traffic engineer, I believe, was on the call who can attest to that we only need thirty-five. Um, the goal for that is to one, provide a better flow of traffic, but for two, because, uh, we can allow us extra open space and greenery to continue to make the project look really nice, um, especially compared to what's there, this project would be a very nice addition to the town, we believe. Um, and the architects, and then they do a very good job to make the storefronts and elevations look very nice um, and pleasant for the neighborhood and the community. Um, as part of our, uh, plan, we'll be having underground utilities, um, to the best extent possible. Uh, the sewer line will be connected, um, about, we'll be adding a hundred feet onto that sewer line that we'll be connecting into. We do know that we have to get approval through the town council for that. Um, so we'll be removing the current septic system that's on the property because that's how it operates with a septic system. Um, we know that we will have to go through the zoning board for the ten thousand six hundred and forty square feet of retail space, there's only ten thousands allowed by code. Um, but we do know that this board has the ability to grant a waiver for the parking, so we would be asking for that from this board as part of our application if the board would be so inclined. Um, additionally, um, ca- as I mentioned, um, the other utilities being electric, telephone and cable would hopefully be underground as well. Um, with that being said, that really does, um, sum up the entire project as, as a whole. But I'll hand it off to our engineer, Kim, um, she's on the line, we also have our traffic engineer, Pat, who's on the line. The architect Doug Grunnett, who's on the line, and if the, anyone has any specific questions for the developer, we have Matt Ugalito, um, from Garrett Homes on the line, um, but we'll try to keep it as brief as we can because we know it's been a long night and there's still an application after us, thank you.
Absolutely.
Uh, go ahead. Go ahead, Kim.
Uh, okay, sure, so I'm Kimberly Mazwick, I'm an engineer with BL Companies, uh, and we've been working with the applicant on this, can I screen share quickly?
Please do.
Okay, all right. Let me just, um, can you all see, this is just the aerial? Yeah, okay, so this is the existing, uh, Garden Zen Restaurant right here, you'll see. Four nine, uh, four ninety-five Washington Street is the address for this, there's two driveways here. MacArthur Boulevard over in this area, uh, I do want to just show you quickly some of these things, um, that we're gonna clean up. So you'll see over here, this is actually that, um, the lot, the top lot on MacArthur Boulevard, and it's just really a sea of paving over here, little bit of grass island paving over here, these trees will remain. Um, but we will clean this up with part of our, um, proposed project here. So that's just so, to get you orientated, let me just close this and show you the plans very quickly. Um, this is the existing conditions plan, basically Washington Street down here, MacArthur Boulevard, and this is the first lot over here, um, and then the back lot in this area, and those will have to be combined. Um, and we'll do that for sure here. Um, let me show you our colored plan. So you can see, um, we have the proposed ten thousand six hundred and forty square foot retail facility here. Um, basically, the restaurant was over here, the driveway, there was a driveway here and a driveway over in this location. So we'll close those up and just consolidate that to one, one driveway in this area here. Um, coming in with the proposed parking spots, and again, um, as Joe mentioned, we're looking at only doing thirty-five. That's more than what this user needs based on historical records that they have. Uh, but we also, um, know that there was some concern at our last meeting regarding what if somebody else comes in and just, just so that you could see, um, that we can fit them, the required number, this is what it looks like with fifty-four spaces. So if need be, it's easy to just add this paved area up here, uh, but for now, of course, we felt it would be better to leave it as green space. Um, and then you can really clean up this, this kind of open this, uh, undefined roadway here. Um, get the grass and then have a curved entrance in here. So there's, um, as far as traffic, really, um, it's, it's minimal and not gonna be large in comparison to what the restaurant was, um, we did do a traffic study, we provided that to you all. And we had, um, sixty trips for peak weekday, which relates to fifty cars coming in and out. Um, and then on the peak, peak weekend, it was Saturday midday, it was ninety, roughly ninety, a little bit less than that, so really forty-five cars coming in and out, they usually get one tractor trailer once a week, um, it's a WB sixty-seven. This is designed so the trucks can come in and do all the, the truck turning movements on site, they can come pull in, back out, and then go out, MacArthur Boulevard. Um, so we'll be able to, to make sure that that's, uh, a safe situation for you all. They get about two or three box trucks, um, per week as well, um, and they obviously have loading, loading spots over here that they can utilize for that. As Joe mentioned, utilities are readily available, um, we have the existing utilities from the, from the restaurant, actually, so we should be able to reuse the water. This doesn't need to be sprinkled because of the size of the building, um, so we'll be able to reuse that domestic water, which is out front here, the gas service, um, as well, and then electric, there is a pole right in this area, um, and then the electric will come underground and in the back. We will, um, you know, obviously have some stormwater treatment, we don't really need that much because this original, um, you know, lot is developed, has lots of paving, we're actually reducing it with what, what we're proposing here. Um, so, you know, we'll be able to collect and treat that, um, and then have an overflow into the system that's located in Washington Street. We also have landscaping shown here, um, you know, and this is a residential area over in this area here. So we have that twenty-foot, um, increased setback that's required for residential uses. So we've got that in this area with, um, quite a hedge row essentially of arborvitae with a mix of trees over there. And then some additional tree plantings near the driveways and the entries in front of the building. We will have sight lighting, we are aware that, um, we have, you know, the residential use over here, so we'll be very uh, cognizant of that when we're working on the lighting plan and make sure we don't have any spillage and don't put any lights on the backside there. And then we'll make sure it's adequately, um, illuminated in this area here. I think that's, uh, you know, that's very brief, if you have any questions, I certainly will, um, answer them, and, um, I don't know if Matt or Pat have anything else to add?
I, I have a couple of comments, um, on the plan. One, I, I like the traffic flow coming out of, uh, MacArthur, that you're utilizing that. And also hooking up to the sewer is, is, is a plus because I know there was, uh, a lot of septic issues in those past buildings. Um, other than that, um, you know, I appreciate businesses coming to Coventry. Uh, the one on Newsnack Hill seems to be thriving, um, there was a lot of issues with traffic and concerns when we were developing that, and, um, uh, I don't, I don't think, I think it's been managed well, um, I don't particularly see any problems with traffic here. But, um, those are my comments, um, I'll open it up to any board members that have any, have any questions for you.
Mr. Chair, Glenn Anderson.
Go ahead, Glenn.
Um, this is Ma- Ms. Mazwick, uh, what about the signs, are you gonna have a Dollar General sign on the street on MacArthur and, uh, um, Main Street?
So typically, we come back with, um, signage under a separate permit, along with the building permit, when they actually have more details on what they're looking for, I don't know if Matt, uh, Ugalito can speak more to that as far as ju- or even Doug is on, the architect's on here as well, he may be able to add something.
Yeah, I, I haven't looked, uh, specifically at, uh, what's allowed in this area. We typically do one on the Main Street, I haven't looked to see if a second one is allowed on MacArthur or not. Um, but obviously, we're gonna comply with what the town allows, we're not gonna try to push for anything in excess of that.
Thanks, and, you know, I don't know, sometimes we get particular with our signs and, uh, I don't know, it's all, it's all good reasoning, but, uh,
Yeah, and, and we always try to make sure that, you know, obviously, we're gonna follow your requirements, we're not gonna get crazy on signage.
Right, and then following up with the chair said, uh, the Dollar Genu- General way up on Route Three Hockney Hills, uh, just a good example is, um, you know, with the si- uh, you know, the signage and the, you know, facade all around. That's all.
Um, thank you, Mr. Anderson. Please.
I'm sorry, um, Mr. Flynn, I just don't know who was speaking, I know it was Mr. Anderson and then who answered the question, I don't know who that was, I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry, sorry, this is, uh, Matt Ugalito, I'm the developer with Garrett Homes.
Thank you.
Sorry about that.
Sorry, Heather.
Mr. Flynn, may I speak for a moment?
What's that, please?
Can I speak for a moment, please?
Yeah, I can't see you with the screen, though, could we take that down? Thank you, go ahead, go ahead, Russ.
Um, was Pat gonna testify tonight, was she gonna give a presentation, if not, I just have a couple of questions for her, that's no big deal. I don't know, Kim, what you were planning on?
I don't, I, why don't you just ask me your questions, I don't think, you know, unless there's a huge-
This site has, uh, is, uh, the access to one seventeen is controlled by a traffic signal, correct? There are existing, are there existing loop detectors in the pavement? I'm asking you, yep.
You're unmuted.
We can't hear her.
Yep. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Now we can.
Uh, perfect, thank you, I, I, um, Ruffel, I could go either way, I have a presentation or I can just answer your questions, but to the specific question with the traffic signal, I believe there are loop detectors in the pavement, yes.
I also thought so, and then if, if we went back and we took a look at Kim Mazwick's picture again, the colorful drawing that she showed, it showed underground stormwater storage there, right on top of the where the loops would be. That's why I was a little concerned. Um, so I didn't know if you were gonna petition riot out to get rid of the loops, go to some sort of camera detection system. Um, I didn't know, I, I didn't know where you were going. Could we take a look at the picture again, Kim?
Yep, we can, hold on. Kim, if you wanna pull up the aerial, it will actually show it more clearly as well, what, what is in the pavement? The aerial, okay, let me see here, hold on, it's not cooperating with me right now. Am I not allowed to screen share again all of a sudden here? Oh, boy.
You having problems? I have that, I have that same drawing, I could screen share it, because you emailed it to me.
Oh, wait, there it just went, I don't know if somebody took away my privileges or what.
You were abusing them.
Pat wants to see the aerial, so hold on here. Either way, um, you're right, you can see that the subsurface stormwater, um, being outlined there, but with the Google Earth, we can definitely, um, see that there are loop detectors there, or they're used to. We can shuffle that, that's totally, it's preliminary location, so we will coordinate and, and move the stormwater accordingly.
Okay, that, that's all I was concerned about, yeah, because you, yeah, I mean, you know, those are six by forty, then I believe there's also, uh, correct me if I'm wrong, I, I believe DOT also has a, an easement that they had recorded, uh, that went along with, uh, those easements, so they would have the right to pass and repass to repair if necessary.
That is correct.
We, we, DOT does have an easement there? Or do they just have the loops?
No, I believe they have, I believe they have a loop detector easement, Mr. Kalunian.
Okay.
Let me just see on the survey here.
Yeah, well, when you go through the physical alterations permit, I'm sure you can work something out. They're fine with the cameras as long as someone else is paying for them, they're more expensive than- I, I have a couple of questions when you're ready, Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead, Rick.
At, at what point do we get to see the architecture, as Mr. Anderson started, the signage and the architectural drawings, uh, for the building? And and the reason I'm asking is because, um, this is a plus-size Dollar General, this is not the same as the Dollar General that's on Newsnack, is that correct?
Correct.
I don't know what the five-
Yeah, the Dollar General on Newsnack is a standard Dollar General, and I remember when that came before us, the first thing they brought in was all these nice renderings of what the building was gonna look like on all four sides as well as the proposed sign. And then there was some discussion, and I believe they may, may have even made some slight modifications to the, the facade to fit in, but I, I could be mistaken, so that's why I'm just wondering, is it that we don't get to see that until, uh, preliminary and it's normally not available at Master? Or is it just that because there was that non-disclosure, it wasn't being provided?
Really, we were just following the checklist that was on the application, but, um, Doug is here, I don't know if Doug wants our architect to screen share.
I, I asked because I wasn't sure, I couldn't recall whether or not it was shown at Master or, or at preliminary, it may have been, it may not have been, so. If it's not required, that's fine, you told us what it is.
Doug, if, if you could, do you wanna share?
Sure.
Do you have the? Yeah, we're not, we're not against sharing what, what we have, so go ahead, Doug, if you can. My computer's thinking real quick, hold on. Okay, can everyone see my screen?
Yes.
Yeah, but it hasn't opened yet.
Hasn't opened yet? No, we can see the, the file folder, we can't see the- We actually, I think it's a little delayed. Let me, um, stop the share and try it again.
And in the meantime, have you already applied for the physical alterations permit for DOT or is that forthcoming?
No, no, we're trying through the, um, variance portion of it first with the zoning board before we go too crazy.
Uh, can you now see my screen?
Nope.
We're just seeing Windows Explorer, it's like you're sharing that specific screen instead of all of them?
I don't know why it's not working. I'm gonna try it another way.
Well, let me, um, while he's doing that, um, I'm gonna share my screen, Rick, if that's okay with you for a minute. Uh, uh, Ron, I'm sorry.
Yeah, go ahead.
Um, can everybody see my screen?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah.
All right, so here, this is the store at, um, Newsnack and Harkney, um. I was hoping you guys could tell whether or not by looking at this, whether it was, um, the same prototype, it, it doesn't look like it's the same to me, um.
No, it, it, it's not the same prototype, the, uh, the ten-six store is, is a new, um, uh, the new prototype for Dollar General, so it is a sl- it is a bigger store, um, the older stores are smaller. So the, the, the ten-six four, ten-six forty that we're applying, uh, and we're, uh, putting in here, or hoping to put in here, is a bigger store.
Okay.
But the general-
Not that much, no. Okay, go ahead, Matt.
No, it, it's, it's not much bigger than the, uh, the previous stores, but it is a different, it is a, a different prototype. No, it, it's, it's not much bigger than the, the previous stores, but it is a different, it is a different prototype.
And one thing I also wanted to show, you know, when you guys, I, I drive by this store quite a bit, I want you to look at the amount of parking spaces and the amount of cars in the lot, and I want you to think about the thirty-five that proposing. I mean, I'm only looking at one, two, three, four, five, six, I mean, there's only roughly seven cars in the lot. Whoops.
Well, I brought that up Russ, about the traffic. I mean, that was a big issue and I don't see a lot of traffic generated from that store.
No, I don't know. There hasn't been any traffic issues at all, and I know quite a few people were concerned, but I, I, I just don't see it.
Now, is the plus store replicate, replicate the one in West Warwick? Is that also a plus store?
Nope, it's not. It's like this one.
Okay.
What is the size of this store on New Snack for perspective?
I don't remember how big this one was, to be honest with you.
I mean, it's.
I don't know, I don't have an answer.
It's within, it's within five hundred square feet.
I'm really sorry, it's Heather the Snack, forget, I just do not know who is speaking, I, I.
I'm sorry Heather, I'll stop sharing. There we go.
I don't wanna confuse anybody, I'm sorry.
Heather, that was Rick Burke that asked the question about the size of the building.
I think it was probably
Thank you.
somewhere between five hundred and a thousand square feet.
Yeah, mo, most of the old prototypes were ninety-one hundred square feet.
Oh, there you go, okay.
That sounds right.
Yeah.
Without an aerial, it's, it's, it's hard to see what that is, are they ninety-one hundred?
Doug, we're still seeing your Windows Explorer folder.
That's, that's okay. The reason I asked, I thought it was somewhat important is because this building is actually situated sideways, so the travelway is gonna look at the side of the building as opposed to the front. And there's a brick building immediately to the right that comes out to the street and is practically on your property line. So I think the facade, you know, is, is something that may need some special consideration. Although I won't disagree that once you get past the store, if you're traveling west, you know, we've got a, a smattering of of multifamily dwellings and, and what used to be a gas station, so I'm sure whatever you're putting here is probably an improvement.
Glenn, yes, you can definitely help clean up that entrance to town.
I concur.
Kim, I emailed you the elevations. Did you get them for you to consider? We can share them with the board, yeah.
Yeah, I did.
Apologize, there's something wrong with my sharing capabilities.
Heather, are you okay? Should they be saying their name so you can keep up? Are you okay now?
Well, because the screen shared down, I can see who's speaking based on the boxes, but when the screen share goes up, I'll, I'll need people to state their names if that's okay, thank you.
Yeah, that's.
Now, can everyone see the elevation?
Yes.
Okay. For the record.
State your name, please.
For the record, my name is Doug Runner, and I'm a BKA Architects, we're the architect of record for the project. And these are the proposed elevations, so I'm going to start in the upper left corner with elevation number one. That's the side that fronts on Washington Street. This is a corner entry building, so basically in the right corner of the building is going to be the vestibule. On the Washington Street sign, it's a transparent glazing. The architecture is basically a series of peaked roofs adjoint to adjacent gables. The color scheme is a mix of lights and dark grays to basically stick with the, the Village New England theme. We have provided some opaque fenestration on the building to basically break up the facade. It's spandrel glazing because it was a retail tenant which was disclosed tonight to be a Dollar General. So there will be full height walls beyond there, so those windows that you see will not be visible inside. The facade is broken up with a series of vertical and horizontal white trim boards to basically give it a little bit of scale along the facade. Kim, can you scroll over to the other elevation? So this elevation is opposite of the elevation this side, and it's actually the rear of the building where the receiving area is. The materiality is a dark gray metal panel, and you see adjacent the, the roof line beyond. Can you go to the third elevation, please? So this elevation is the elevation that fronts the parking lot, and it also is adjacent to MacArthur Boulevard. And it's basically an expanded version of elevation on, on Washington Street. The materiality continues through. One thing to note is the gable element over the doors on the left side is actually going to be the sign gentleman. And we've actually shown some decorative goose necks there for illumination or just possible decoration if internal illumination is, is allowed by the code. Again, the roof line is broken up with a series of peaks and gables. And Kim, can you go to the last one, please? So this is the side that's adjacent to the side I just showed you, and this is actually the side where the rainwater drains from the roof. So basically, this is a, essentially a flat roof building with peaks and gables basically added on top. So the ma, majority of the water drains to the flat roof. There is a linear gutter that basically goes from the receiving almost up to the front where that gable is. It's a black EPDM, and it's directed into storm drains, I'm sorry, downspouts that are piped into the storm drain system. And again, we showed the fenestration on the side as well too, to break up the facade. And the materials are the same. The materials we're proposing is a cemented tissue James Hardy board product for both the clapboard as well as the trim base. As you can see, the gabled roof is pretty much surrounding the perimeter sides that abuts MacArthur and Washington and part of the rear elevation, but unfortunately because of the drainage requirements, we need to leave that side open, so there are some rooftop units shown there, so they will be visible from Washington Street adjacent wise, but everywhere else they'll be obscure. And with that, I welcome any questions you may have.
This is Rick Kalunian.
Anybody else on the board have any comments?
I, I do, Mr. Chairman. So you talked about the possibility of having the Dollar General signage on the parking lot side. Will that also be on the Washington Street side too, where those little things are?
Dollar General typically likes to have the signage on both sides, so if it's allowed by code, they would like to do it on both sides. If, if not, they will, they will choose the most dominant side which priority entry.
Or it makes sense.
And again, we are not proposing the signage package because it will be submitted under a separate permit. I'm just speaking from past experience.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Anybody else? Definitely an improvement to what I call a blighted area. Anybody else? Okay Steph, this is a public, this is a public informational hearing. I have to open up public hearing?
Open public hearing.
Take a motion, open up public hearing?
Hold on, this is, this is advertised as a, as a public informational meeting.
Yeah, that, that is, if I may.
Go ahead Russ.
That is how state law calls public hearings for master plans.
Okay.
They call them public informational meetings. At preliminary, they call them public hearings.
Okay, thank you.
It's the same thing.
So I'll take that motion by Mr. Mattson. Do I hear a second?
Looking at.
I have a second by Mr. Ray's. Mobile call to open up public hearing. Mr. Ray's.
Aye.
Mr. Kenny.
Aye.
Mr. Burke.
Aye.
Mr. Anderson.
Aye.
Mr. Mattson.
Aye.
Ms. Lukowitz. Is Ms. Lukowitz with us?
She is not.
Okay.
Is it me?
Yes.
Yes.
And Chairman Flynn also said yes. Okay, public hearing is now open.
Hey Chairman Flynn, somebody has some really good background noise going on. Can we try and find who that is and have him mute?
Like their TV or their radio.
I don't hear it anymore.
It's gone.
Anybody from the public would wanna speak for or against this project?
There is somebody with their hand raised. Cody, do you mind bringing them in?
Bring you in now. They are in the meeting.
Who, who, what's, who are we looking for, Mr. Cody?
Joyce Kazinsky.
Joyce?
I'm here.
Could you, could you state your name and address for the record, please?
Joyce Kazinsky. Two oh one MacArthur Boulevard.
Thank you.
And I have two concerns.
Go ahead.
One is the sewers. Will you hook up to the sewers from Washington Street or from the cul-de-sac in the back of it on Douglas Court?
Who wants to answer that? Go ahead, Kim.
So we are actually hooking up right into the line that's in Washington Street. So it's about, yep. It's just a hundred feet away.
All right. My second concern is the sign on MacArthur Boulevard. I would like to, going down the road, be more informed on what that will look like, how high it'll be, where it will be. I am two houses past this parking lot, or the, or the second entrance into the area, and I am concerned about that sign. I will say that I followed all the meetings that you folks had when the Dollar General did go up on, on New Snack Hill Road or Maple Road. And I think they did a really good job, and I think it looks very nice. But now it's in my backyard and I just really don't want any offensive sign out there on MacArthur Boulevard. So I don't know how I stay connected to all of this, but that's just a concern that I have. Thank you.
Well, thank you for your comments. Kim, you wanna address the signage on MacArthur?
Sure, so as we mentioned previously, the signage will be coming in under a separate permit application. And it will be in conformance with what the zoning bylaws dictate and mandate, so we won't be asking for any variances or anything. You know, any special exceptions or anything for the signage, but it will be under a separate permit, and I would, you know, assume that you'll be informed as in a butter.
I heard you say all that the first time, but I'm more or less, more of a visual person. I, I don't know how you're gonna keep me in the loop, but I really do wanna be kept in the loop on that.
Mr. Flynn, if I may.
Go ahead, Mr. Crossman.
There's gonna be another public hearing, Joyce. You will be, you'll get another letter in the mail.
Okay.
This is master plan. They'll be coming back for preliminary. You will be notified again, just like you were this time.
Cause I got two notices for this, one for zoning, one for planning.
Correct. You'll get another one for planning.
I'll get another one for planning, okay.
Yes.
All right, that makes me feel better.
And with respect to the signage, I'll be honest, I do not envision any sort of pylon sign at all on MacArthur Boulevard. What I'm envisioning, and I, again, they haven't submitted anything, but what I think I could live with would be some sort of very low monument style signing that's directing people in. So if they wanted to go into the site, you know, maybe, you know, enter here type of thing, just so they wouldn't have to go to 117, wait for the traffic signal, they could come in the back way. But it would be a very low monument style, low to the ground, you know, eighteen, twenty-four inches high type deal. That's all I would envision for signage on MacArthur Boulevard.
Okay.
More directional in nature to get the traffic in and out.
And I get it, I understand, you know, I understand that, but I just really don't want any offensive signage. This has been my husband's family home over fifty years, you know, they go back to when it was fondly. So, you know, I just don't want anything offensive of it.
I understand, I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Yeah, if I may, this is Matt Ukuleido, the developer. I can bring examples of, of previous signage we've done to try to blend into the community a little bit more. Just to kinda show you where we would go with signage, and then get your feedback, because we, we can help influence the signage with Dollar General, even though it is a separate application. So we can provide feedback from the, from the planning board.
And
Thank you.
And getting back to the, to the sewers, just if by chance you don't hook up there, would we be notified that you would be changing that plan?
We have to hook up. It's mandated because we're within two hundred feet of a public sewer system, so you can't have an onsite septic. You have to hook up.
I'm not disputing that. You're, right now, you're saying Washington Street is where you plan on hooking up to the sewers, correct?
Mm-hmm.
If that change for some reason and you decide to hook up on Douglas Court, which is the cul-de-sac beside this building, would we be notified of that?
No, but I don't envision that happening, and I, again, let me just explain why. They have no physical access to get to Douglas Court. They don't abut that street. They would have to trespass, for lack of a better term, across someone else's property to get to the sewer line. It's my understanding, the sewer on Douglas Court was taken, there was an easement granted from the old MacArthur School.
Yes.
And that's where they got that sewer from. We really, because of where our lot is, we have no access to get over there. So I honestly, I do not envision any sewer tie-ups to Douglas or, or the MacArthur School area.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
That's it for me.
Thank you very much for your comments.
You're welcome.
Anybody else?
There is somebody else, Cody.
Yep, I'm bringing in Mike now.
Hi, this is Mike Leclerc at two oh five MacArthur Boulevard.
Go ahead, Mike.
I would just like to second Joyce's thing about the sign on MacArthur Boulevard. That any large sign would be disturbed, not disturbing, but it would, I don't know the word to use, but would be ugly right there, because I'm right next to the property. My house is the first one on MacArthur. And that's all I wanted to say, was I wanted to second her.
Mike, I totally agree with what Mr. Crossman said. My vision is, is just a small sign, you know, with, with the Dollar General on the entrance. I don't see any, I don't vision any big signs on MacArthur Boulevard.
Okay, thank you. And would there be any additional privacy between their back lot and my property?
Kim, if you wanna take that, I know you said there was a landscape design going up in the back part.
Yes, there is. Do we wanna, I don't know if he can see the screen or not, if you want me to screen share, but we do have there is, on the back lot, there's existing trees that will remain. There's nothing really new way in the, in the back lot. There is towards the residential areas.
Could you show the colored parking plan, so he could see where the parking lot ends?
Sure.
And where everything else would either stay the same, or maybe if you just loomed and seeded.
That's what we're proposing here, let me. Are you able to see this?
I am, yes. See there's some circles across the property line?
Yep, so these are trees right here, but you can see this, this space right here, that's all green space. You know, this was paving right up close to the edge here to the tree line, but this will all now be loomed and seeded in this area.
Thank you.
So you've got quite, quite a distance.
Okay, I was, I thought the parking spots there were actually on the property line, I'm sorry.
And Mike, if I could add, that's why they actually reduced the parking, so they could put green space there.
Thank you.
You're very welcome. Thank you for the comments. Anybody else? See anybody else?
There's no other requests.
No.
All right, I'll ask one more time. Is anybody else from the public would like to comment on this project before I close public hearing?
I do have one thing, Mr. Flynn.
Go ahead, Mr. Crossman.
I did, there was a gentleman who came in here, um. He lives at, let me look at his. He lives on Douglas Court that they were referring to. It was on Mr. Kelly. Uh, he was, um, questioning, uh, any sort of, if they'd be putting any fencing up at all. Uh, to separate the commercial from the residential. So I just wanted to get that on, uh, I wanted to throw that out there since it, uh, the gentleman said he could not make it tonight. But he, um, had, came in and specifically asked about that.
So there, there's no plans for any, um, fencing at this time, and there, there are a significant, um, amount of trees and whatnot, whatnot in between those two lots. I can pull up the Google map here. Hold on, um.
It wasn't so much a visual thing with him. It was.
Okay.
He talked about kids cutting through. I don't know. I don't live out in that neighborhood, but that, that's one of the things he talked about.
So really more for security?
I believe so, yes.
Hmm.
Um, and let me, the gentleman who I'm talking about, his house is where this foundation is right here.
Right, right there. Yep.
I mean, it does look like there are some very large deciduous trees all along this, you know, northern and northwestern property line.
Yeah.
We paint that out just a little bit.
Let me kind of see here.
I kind of like the natural buffer myself.
I don't see where the only peo, the only people that might, this is Rick Clunian, that might benefit from cutting through there would be people that are already on Douglas Court. Because otherwise they could go through the old, the old school, or they just use MacArthur or once Washington Street. It's no shorter for anyone.
It, it's the discretion of the board. I was just, I was just.
Appreciate you that. I appreciate.
Doing what I was asked to do.
I see we deal with that.
We could deal with it at preliminary.
I mean preliminary, yeah.
There's also quite a grade change. If you look at this closely, two nineteen to two fifteen, right on the property line. So I don't think you're gonna get a lot of people cutting through there necessarily, you know?
I agree.
Yeah.
Over here.
Thanks for bringing that up, Mr. Crossman.
I'm sorry, could we just go back? What does he get for a buffer on, on his side there along that? I guess it's the north side of the building with the trucks loading.
Hang on. Hmm, we have, we do have Arbivideo along here. So we did kind of Arbividee hedgerow along here, plus those existing trees will remain as well.
Okay, yep, that looks good. Thank you.
So, sure.
Thank you, Kim.
You're welcome.
Do you have anybody else that wants to speak on this project?
There's two members of the public with their hand raised.
Okay, bring one in, please.
Bring in Joyce. Ms. Kazinski, you're in the meeting.
He's muted.
You're on mute, Joyce.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Alright. I think the trees.
Will you just say your name and address for the record again, please?
Certainly. Joyce Kazinski, two oh one MacArthur Boulevard.
Thank you.
Okay. I think the trees that you just showed us, most of them are gone now. And I, I could be wrong. I'm gonna ask Mr. Leclerc at two oh five to verify that for me because he can see it better than I can. And maybe he was the second hand that was up, but I think most of them are gone. My husband and I are sitting here saying they're not there anymore.
Big yuck, yeah.
That's it.
Thank you for your comments.
Yes.
I wouldn't know if they were there or not. I mean, the, the, uh, it shows that they are there. Now, if you can Google map it and, uh,
Yeah.
That's what I had on there was Google Maps. Hold on.
You can't rely on Google Maps anymore.
Yep.
Question is, if the trees aren't there, uh, would the applicant consider providing adequate or additional, uh, plantings to ensure that there's a, uh, a nice thick buffer along the, uh,
So up here.
The lines to the right. Yeah, just up to, abutting any residential areas, uh, to the north.
Uh huh.
And, uh, to the back of that extra lot.
Mr. Chairman, this is Attorney Joe Burney. Um, seeing how there's a, a question as to the landscape and buffering, um, and it, we can definitely address that at the preliminary stage. I think we can do our own investigation on what's out there currently. If Google Maps isn't providing an accurate description. And then we can come back to the board and, and have a good, um, understanding of what's there and what we can propose to assist the neighborhood.
Thank you. I know the Arbivides are, are a good choice too, by the way, in my opinion. Anybody else want to talk for or against this project? Anybody from the public?
There's another public request. I'll bring him in now.
Okay, thank you.
Hi, this is Mike Leclerc again from two oh five MacArthur Boulevard. And to confirm what Joyce said, those trees were taken out last, uh, July or August. And that's all I had.
Okay, if you, if you heard from the applicant, they, they will certainly address any buffer that's needed. Uh, they will be coming back at preliminary. They will do their investigation, and we will certainly, uh, make sure there's an adequate buffer.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
There's no other requests.
Okay, I'll say it one more time. Anybody else from the public like to speak for or against this project? Okay, seeing none, I'll, uh, take a motion to close public hearing.
Make a motion to close public hearing, please.
Closed motion by Mr. Mattson. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Kenny. Okay, I'll do, uh, uh, Mr. Ray's.
Hi.
Kenny.
Hi.
Burke.
Hi.
Mr. Anderson.
Hi.
Mr. Mattson.
Hi.
Mr. Clunian.
Hi.
Chairman Flynn also says aye. Okay, public hearing is now closed. Anybody else on the, on the board have any questions for the applicant? I don't see any. Um, I think we'll continue to, uh, preliminary. That's up to the applicant.
Alright, um, Mr. Chairman, if, 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 if you'll allow it, I will, uh, make a motion for favorable approval of the master plan submission.
Yes, go ahead.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion that the master plan submission be approved. Uh, owners Michael W. and Kimberly K. Hodes, applicant Garrett Holmes LLC for property located at four ninety-five Washington Street. That's assesses Platte fifty-six, lots nine and eleven in the, uh, VMC zone. Uh, former restaurant, the applicant is proposing to construct a ten thousand six hundred and forty square foot building for proposed, uh, retail use. The, um, sorry. Um, the comprehend, the project appears to be consistent with the comprehensive plan. It notes that the purpose of the village commercial district is to provide land use category that will support a variety of lesson type, less intense type land uses, including retail services, light industrial, office and residential uses. This proposed retail store is consistent with the town of Coventry's comprehensive community plan. The proposal will not likely have any significant environmental impacts considering the existing use of the property. The subdivision will be reviewed by the town engineer and R I D E M to ensure that the project conforms to both the local and state regulations with respect to stormwater management and the implementation of best management practices. The subject property is zones VMC and the proposed plans meet the dimensional requirements. I don't know why this is in here. It's not a residential plus. Um, so anyway, uh, they need, me, meet the requirements for that zone. Um, I believe this, uh, approval is, has to be subject to the, uh, following approvals from the Coventry Fire District, the Rhode Island Department of Environmental Management, the Town Council and the Sewer Subcommittee for Connection to Sewer Service, Kent County Water Authority Approval for Water Service Connections, National Grid Approvals Related to Gas and Electric to be Submitted and Coordinated at Preliminary. Uh, they need a Soil Erosion and Sediment Control Plan that needs to be approved by the Town Engineer. Uh, Cable and Phone Services will be provided by the Cable Company. I also believe they need a Rhode Island Department of Transportation Physical Alterations Permit. And, um, I just need to take a break there for just, uh, one second. Does this, uh, their request in it, I guess it, it, it's contingent upon, um, approval from the zoning board, um, for parking relief, uh, for the thirty-five as opposed to fifty-four spaces and also for the, um, extra six hundred and forty square feet that's proposed to the building size. I'd like to incorporate the planning director's report into my motion.
Thank you, Rick. I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second by Mr. Mattson. Any discussion?
Yeah. Um.
Go ahead, Russ.
Thank you, sir. I have a question. Uh, in the planning, um, in, in the subdivision regs, it specifically states that the planning commission has the authority to grant the waivers on the requirement of parking spaces if they so need. I was just curious why they were going to zoning to ask for parking relief when the planning commission can grant that as a waiver.
Uh, it, I was just wondering too, why we didn't have a recommendation to zoning, so I, I was kind of thinking the same.
Well, we, we only make recommendations to zoning on special use permits. They were asking, is, it was my understanding, and I'd like Mr. Studley to comment in on this. Uh, they were asking for a dimensional variance. The six, extra six hundred and forty square feet was a dimensional variance. And because it was a dimensional, not a special use permit, it normally would not get a recommendation from this board. John, you're muted. Could you please unmute? Um.
Hi, Russ, yes.
So what is your understanding on that whole parking waiver and the, um, six hundred and forty square feet?
Yeah, so, um, just like you said, the parking can be granted as a waiver by the planning commission, um, per the subdivision regulations. And then the, uh, six hundred and forty square feet, um, is over the ten thousand as required by the VMC zone. So that will be a dimensional variance by the zoning board. Um, because it's only dimensional variance, they're not requiring a special use permit, so there's no recommendation from this board.
Okay.
Thank you. So they'll need it for the square footage of the building, but what, they don't need it for the, the reduction of parking, correct?
I will amend my motion to, uh, still stipulate that they need to obtain approval from the zoning board for the extra six hundred and forty square feet. And I would like to, to, uh, include the, uh, planning board, um, waiver as approved for the thirty-five versus the fifty-four spaces at this stage.
Okay, hey, do I get an amended second?
An amended second you have.
Thank you, Mr. Mattson. Any other discussion? Seeing none. Mr. Ray's.
Hi.
Kenny.
Hi.
Mr. Burke.
Hi.
Mr. Anderson.
Hi.
Mr. Mattson.
Hi.
Mr. Clunian.
Hi.
Chairman Flynn also says aye.
Thank you very much, members of the board and Mr. Chairman. We appreciate it. We'll see you soon.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, staff, it's nine fifty-five. Will we proceed to another public hearing?
It's above my pay grade, sir. You're driving the bus tonight. I'm a passenger on this bus of life.
I'm asking the board, do we need, do we want to proceed to another public hearing or do we want to continue it?
I would be in favor of continuing it since we're not supposed to do business after ten or no new business, and we're like.
I'll second that.
If, if, if I could just interject one second, it's Jeff Caffrey on behalf of the applicant. My only concern is our, um, our master plan approval expires on July first. Um, so we're, we're under somewhat of a time constraint to get this matter heard.
Go ahead, Mr. Crossman, you're, you're muted. You're muted, Mr. Crossman.
I'm working on it. There we go, sir. Thank you. Um, I believe I had this discussion, I don't know, maybe it was Attorney D'Agostino and I, but here's the way I look at it. Because they have already submitted their application, uh, just because their application has not gotten heard, I don't think they need to ask for another extension, um, of their former approval. Dave, do you want to weigh in? You're muted.
Yes, um, I, I agree with that. I, I think it was something we discussed the other day, uh, just given the amount of items on the agenda. So I, I, I concur with that, um, that they would not have to ask for an extension.
Okay, right. And, uh, and so, and as long as this evening, if the chairman does decide to continue this matter, he continues it to a time, date specific, you know?
That is correct.
No advertising, uh, issues.
That is correct.
Is our next meeting July twenty-second?
Uh, it's the twenty-eighth, sir.
Oh, it's, it's the fifth week.
Okay.
Cause I have five. I have, uh, okay. So it's the twenty, what did you say it was, the twenty-eighth?
I did. Yeah, no, because July first is a Thursday, so it's the fourth Wednesday.
Correct. Okay, uh,
Do we need a motion?
I'll take, I'll get, I'll entertain a motion to continue this, uh, let's see, uh, the woods at Red Brook Phase Three to the July twenty-eighth meeting.
You have a motion.
I have a motion by Mr. Mattson. Do I have a second?
You have a second.
Second by Mr. Ray's. Mobile call, Mr. Ray's.
Hi.
Kenny.
Hi.
Mr. Burke.
Hi.
Mr. Anderson.
Hi.
Mr. Mattson.
Hi.
Mr. Clunian.
Hi.
Chairman Flynn also says aye. Uh, thank you for the applicant, uh, for waiting till next month. Uh, appreciate that. And, uh, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Oh, a motion to adjourn.
I have a motion by Mr. Mattson. Do I have a second?
Second it.
I have a second by Mr. Ray's. All those in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Hi, hi.
Have a good night.
Hey, Mike, this is Jim Kenny. Welcome to the board. I wasn't here last month.
Thank you.
Woo, woo.